I'm the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back to the City Council chambers after our fun, I don't know, limited engagement at the Stillwater City Community Center. Yeah, and we're back on a hybrid online Zoom format here, so we've got a couple councilors in the room and three of us online. So this was working well earlier. I appreciate this legislature for putting us back and allowing us to have this format again. So that takes us to the consent docket. Item 3A is approved, the consent docket, which is special meeting minutes from February 1st. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor's War.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti.
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake.
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item four is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. We have one person signed up here in the room to speak on item 6E, and that is Javen Moore. Would you like to come up and make your comments?
My name is Javen Moore. With me tonight is my wife Stacy Moore. We represent several classes of community. I do several different things. My wife's a realtor. I'm a home builder here in town. Most recently, our venture is we're looking to put in a wedding venue in Stillwater. The property we've located is on the west side of Stillwater. It's 1819 North Ranch Road. And the main purpose for coming here tonight is we're having trouble getting the water that we need to supply a fire suppression system for this wedding venue. It's basically looking at this point in time, the capital, from our standing right now is where we're at, is basically they'll only give us a one-inch water meter. And the building requires at least a three-inch turbo water meter. And so just talking to the city, our understanding is that they won't support a fire suppression system on the northwest side of town. And my understanding also is that the building or the water line right now isn't set up where we could actually add any more water meters to it. So at this point in time, it falls upon us to secure the capital, to make this dream a reality, basically to a certain extent. And so I guess the purpose here tonight is to see what it would take for the city to allow something like that to happen. It just becomes one of those things for us as a developer, because I am a home builder too, it's such an investment for us and it somewhat keeps us away from doing what we want to do is build and bring more and more people to Stillwater because of the ad investment to put in these fire suppression systems or to use the things that we need to put those in. That's really what I came for here. If you guys have any solutions, any ideas, I'd really like to hear your input. So with that, is there any questions?
I hope you don't have any questions for your time, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
We don't have that specific item on our agenda, so we'll saddle along with you.
I kind of learned about this a little late, so kind of dance around protocol.
We appreciate you coming in and sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 6A is next up. That's the City Projects Quarterly Updates, EC-21-26. Mr. Monte Carnes.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Monte Carnes, Director of City Engineering. There we go. I'll be followed by Paul Prigle, Airport Director, to present the airport projects. For transportation, we'll begin with the main McElroy reconstruction and the sidewalk on Western. We touched on this last time. Essentially, this project is complete. There's an aerial view of the intersection of how much work we did, and of course, a shot of the sidewalk and the path. For fiscal year 18 pavement management, we're working on the last project of a group of projects, which is reconstruction of Fourth Avenue from Washington to Hester, and then Hester from Sixth to Fourth. Actively under construction, here's a project, I mean a view, basically at Washington, excuse me, at Fourth, looking south towards Sixth. That section of street is now complete and open, including the intersection. And contractors actively working on Fourth Avenue at the moment. We've also started work on Sixth Avenue sidewalk between Kings and Orchard. If it had not been for the snow, that project would have been completed by now. It has just a short distance left to be completed. On end to design, excuse me, as part of the fiscal year 20 pavement management, we're looking at rebuilding Seventh Avenue between Main and Lewis. And this would be Main Street. The hatched area is the work we will do. We'll replace some parking, and then we'll replace the intersection of Seventh and Lewis. When we do that, we're going to kind of reconfigure this, remove some of that pavement and add a little green space. Not a lot, but we'll add back a little green space. We anticipate that project being ready to go to bed later this spring. Also included in that is the relocation of the water line and some work in the alley. We're also looking at reconstructing Park and Harnd Street, starting here, this is Airport, this is Perkins. Starting here at Perkins and Harnd, going west around the curve of the North Airport Road, this is in the industrial access area. That road is in pretty bad shape. It's getting difficult for traffic to use that. We've had one accident with a motorcycle on that stretch of road. Also looking at reconstructing Monticello, which is the worst street that we have in We're looking at taking the opportunity to not only reconstruct the street, but maybe make some improvements. If you remember correctly, that this is a kind of a weird intersection. There's kind of an island down in here to kind of try and force people to slow down, make it turn. It used to be kind of an angle and people would really speed through there. Right now, we're proposing that we bring this to a 90. That'll require that we have to purchase some right-of-way from the corner of this lot. You'll also notice that we're looking at how we'd put a sidewalk along the west side of this project. And you can see as we progress through there, there's where we're tying at Orchard, Sunset Avenue, which is kind of the boulevard through that section. Wind around, we get back to Admiral. Again, we're trying to square that intersection up. See, we're bringing the sidewalk all the way to there. Lauren Smith and Electrical's group is looking at what it would take to relocate the electrical or bury it, so that we can include that as part of this project. If not, at least we've got the plan for the future. And we're also, that's part of the area where we're looking at water and sewer lines, we're also looking at what water and sewer has to be done as part of this project as well. Thinking further out and as part of the Sixth Avenue corridor, we might even want to think about closing Walnut and making this a connection back eventually towards Sixth Avenue. Say that as a way to tell you that that's how we're starting to look at all of our projects now, is how does it look into this concept of a total transportation network and what improvements can we make as we go along to make sure that we can accommodate things in the future. Again, fiscal year 20 pavement management, as part of our maintenance projects, we're looking at doing some work on McElroy from Perkins Road East. If we have enough funds, we'll be going back to the west as well. Part of that section will be rebuilt as Perkins Road project. We're looking at what you've seen done on the interstate and turnpikes where we come in, or where they've come in and they've dialed joints at various places and then come back and grind it smooth. This has been a project that's been a couple of years in the making. Last year's pavement management, we asked for, you gave us funds, approved use of funds to put in the underdrain system, to start draining that area and dry up the subgrade that would make this project possible. This is also another example of when we did the assessment in 2017 from IMS, you'll remember they came in and looked at every street in town, every block, structurally tested at least one lane of every block. And from that structural testing, determined that our roads structurally are in much better shape than we thought, they just ride rougher. And we told you at the time that we were going to start looking at strategies to improve the smoothness in the ride because we had such good structure. And this is an example of that. I have not run what the cost would be to reconstruct McElroy, but I can tell you it would be well in excess of $777,000. Also looking at micro-surfacing projects, we anticipate having those ready to go to bid sometime this spring, hoping that we could get in the summer construction schedule. There are very few contractors that do that work. There's only about two really that actively do it. They bid the work in a lot of different communities, and then they schedule it for their summer projects. We usually get sandwiched in between Tulsa and some of the other projects, so we're trying to get that out so we can get on the radar and figure out exactly when we'll get that done. The North Perkins Road widening project, you remember that that's a project that's been a long time in the making. Our portion of that project was to pay for the design work, purchase any right-of-way that needs to be done, and relocate utilities and pay for any associated costs. Our budget for that's about $3 million. We're very close to having all the utilities relocated. We're working very, very hard to let that contract, have things done, so ODOT can let that contract in March with an anticipated construction date in the middle of May. And we're pretty excited about finally getting that project going. And there's a picture of Lakeview and Perkins that shows some of the construction we've been doing. Any questions before I pass it on to Paul?
Councilors, any questions for Monte?
I have two comments, Mayor, and Monte. First of all, of course, I'm excited to hear that you're looking at buried utilities in the Monticello area. And I just, I know it's always a financial consideration, or often a financial consideration. I do like, appreciate that it is being investigated, though. Recently, Monte, it seems I've heard more comments, you know, founded or unfounded, about the disparity in the distribution of projects across the city. And I'm wondering if on these updates, you could just put a map up of the city that shows the projects that are in progress and being planned, so that we can see, so that the citizens can see what parts of the city are getting attention?
We will be happy to do that. To address your comment about some of the disparity, you ought to hear a little bit about our KPI and the way the city staff has started using that. And one of our KPI, number one KPI, is to, for transportation, is to improve our overall street rating. And so we heavily use that in which projects we determine to use, and we'll be happy to explain that further. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Monte.
And just a clarification, that a KPI for those folks that may not know what that acronym stands for, that's our key performance indicator, right, Monte?
That's correct. Thank you for that.
Monte, you mentioned that the Perkins Road project is hopefully going to start in May. What is the timeline for how long we should expect that project to last?
We're projecting 15 to 18 months. We're hoping closer for the 15. And ODOT is putting some incentives and disincentives to try and make that happen.
Good. One other question, I had asked you earlier about where Knoblock was on the list, and I think it's in fiscal year 21.
Yes.
Monte, so year 22 probably before anything happens there. I noticed that it's been torn up pretty bad with water main breaks over this last week. Is that, does that change at all, the schedule for Knoblock?
I don't think so. We'll end up having to do some temporary patching in that. But we're working very hard to get that program to you in the next month or two.
Okay.
And then we'll make that a priority of getting that one out.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Monte. Let's hear about the airport.
All right, thank you. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. And slide should be up here. So there we go. The first project talked about is the fuel farm upgrade, and the primary component of that is to replace our old aviation gas or avgas system with a new tank. It was supposed to be installed this week, but with the weather of the last couple of weeks, that's been put behind. So right now, we have a tentative installation date of the week of the 8th, and it's about a two-day turnaround once they bring it. It is built and ready to be delivered. We're just waiting for it to dry up. The apron reconstruction is probably the most noticeable project that we have going right now. It's because it's on both ends of our airport. And currently, the south section is, should be open this week or next. We have, we're going to complete final inspection here in the next couple of days, again, waiting for the weather. It was supposed to be done last week. We are going to have some sodding and painting that still has to be done, because we are not able to do that right now because of the weather. But other than that, the surface should be open this next week or, within the next week or so. The north section is still going again. It's about two weeks now behind, probably about three by the time it dries up with the runoff and everything we have going, but it's anticipated to be done sometime in July. The center section is 95% designed and in the FAA's hands for final approval of that. And we're anticipating a March bid, and then hopefully a mid-year grant award, and then we can start sometime after that. This is just kind of a overview. This is, this actually is, we actually had aerial photography done on one of our other projects, so this is actually pretty old. This dirt area right here is already completed. They're now working on this section. Obviously, where this dirt is right here, that is all completed now, so we're very excited to get that. And then you can tell where work's already been done, and this is the center portion right here that is yet to be replaced. And that's just a picture. They've done a lot more work since that. Any questions?
Paul, how did your operations go these last couple of weeks? Do you have to cancel any flights?
It was very cold, but you know what? We have a wonderful crew that they've worked. I think we figured it up today between last Monday at 4:00 a.m. and Friday at 5:00. I think we had a little over 475 hours total, man-hours, of snow and ice control of some sort. So it was probably the longest that anybody can remember, that many days straight. Normally, we're fortunate enough to have a one or two-day event, and then it turns like today and melts off, but this was quite the challenge, but they rose to the challenge, and I'm very proud of them.
We are too. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 6B, our Daily Bread summary of COVID assistance program. Becky Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. All right. I wanted to provide you this evening with a summary on the Stillwater resident COVID impact assistance program that recently finished and answer any questions you may have about how it went. Just a reminder of the program. Due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, a large number of residents have sustained and continue to sustain devastating economic losses, causing them to be in need of immediate assistance. In December, the council appropriated $150,000 for the Stillwater resident COVID impact assistance program. This was a new program and was designed to provide immediate relief to Stillwater residents that experience financial hardship due to COVID-19. Utility, rent, or mortgage assistance was provided for those that applied and qualified. The timeline, so our Daily Bread served as the program administrator, and we are very grateful for their willingness to take this program on. The application opened on Monday, December 21st, and it was on the Our Daily Bread website. It was shared widely to nonprofits, churches, and community partners, as well as through the city's media platforms. Within two days, Our Daily Bread received 244 applications, necessitating them to pause so they could review what they already received. And by January 15th, all $150,000 was awarded to Stillwater residents needing the help. In total, 318 applications were submitted, although 26 of those were duplicates. Our Daily Bread staff looked through each application to assess eligibility based on the program guidelines, and they had very, they had a few volunteers also assisting them with the phone calls and meetings with the residents to get a better understanding of their need and financial impact due to COVID-19. Ultimately, 146 applications were approved for some type of assistance, and the average household size awarded 2.73. The types of assistance awarded, 47% of applicants were awarded assistance towards rent or mortgage and utilities, and that covered 69 applicants and about $77,000. 37% of the applicants were awarded assistance towards rent or mortgage, and this covered 54 applicants, $62,000. And then just for utility assistance, 16% of the applicants were awarded that, and it covered 23 applicants and nearly $11,000. Unfortunately, many applicants were denied. The top reason was the financial impact written about on the application was not COVID-related. So for example, three were unemployed prior to COVID, six were medical reasons but not COVID-related, and 75 were not able to show any COVID-19 financial impact documentation as the application requested. Another reason many applicants were denied is they did not live within Stillwater city limits. 10 had a Stillwater address but did not live within city limits, and four were from neighboring towns. And finally, 41 applicants did not provide any requested documents and therefore did not meet the requirements for assistance through this program. The data that we requested on the application proved to be pretty interesting and helping us to understand the bigger picture of need in Stillwater. I found the applicant education level interesting, because it shows us that across all education levels, residents experience financial hardships due to COVID. The top three were those with only a high school diploma, some post-secondary school, and closely in third were residents with a four-year degree or those with a GED. Typically, education attainment is an indicator of potential hardship, so in this instance, assistance was needed across most levels. And similarly, the data for employment type was interesting. It affirmed what all of us already knew, that COVID has affected everyone, every socioeconomic class, race, and most career types. The top three employment types of applicants requesting assistance were unemployed, many of those newly unemployed due to COVID, those that had a full-time job, and those that are working part-time. The maximum award amount was $1,500, and that amount was a breath of fresh air to many of our neighbors. I wanted you to hear a few of the thank yous for this program, because your goal in funding it was to make an immediate impact in the lives of our residents. What great news to wake up to. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work and effort. That is such a great, that is such great news. I'm so thankful, and again, on behalf of my family and myself, thank you, and have a wonderful holiday. I cannot thank you enough, but thank you. Thank you so much. I can't believe this is happening, because I've needed this help and prayed about it and never thought I would get it, but it is going to give me much-needed relief. Thank you. Thank you so much. The organization you work for has blessed my whole family in more ways than one email could contain. And lastly, I wanted to thank Our Daily Bread for administering this program. Both parties learned a lot, and we look forward to future iterations of this type of program, taking what we learned and making it even better and more effective in the future. Rachel Conley is the new executive director for Our Daily Bread, and she's here this evening. And so if you have any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer them, or I can as well. But I wanted to provide that overview, and thank you for putting this program on in the first place.
Thank you, Becky. Councilors, any questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Becky, and thanks to Our Daily Bread. That was a huge flood of work for them to do right in the holiday time, and I really appreciate, and I know the citizens really appreciate, that extra effort that they made, as well as other volunteers who helped. I was interested in the breakdown very much, rent and mortgage, and utility, rent and mortgage. I am a little bit also curious about the spread between rent and mortgage payments, but I appreciate that. The other data is very helpful, and hopefully will be able to be expanded at some time so we can do other helpful things for cities and for the citizens. And I, this leads me to ask if we have heard about the other, the federal CDBG grant, and if that is actually in place? And do we have other CARES money at, in some holding place?
To answer the question about CDBG grant, we heard that we are looking good for it, but we have not received the official approval yet for that funding. But we're working on the program, the phase two of the program, with Our Daily Bread, so that when we do receive that notice, that we can go right into action.
The requirements for that, though, are so different, that it's going to be a very different impact?
Yes.
So I'm just.
Yes, definitely an income guideline for this program, so it is different. Yeah, it will be a little different of a program, for sure.
And if, you know, if we continue to hear about need from citizens, I would hope that we would look at if we, other CARES money, that we might be able to do a different type of program. It's amazing, you know, I'm on the Stillwater CARES email, the different things that people need, and today, there was a request for help for getting a driver's license. I mean, to pay your driver, to get a driver's license. I'm like, wow. I mean, that would be a huge problem if you didn't have enough money to get a driver's license and you had to get a job. But anyway, there's so many things that I know that I take for granted that are a struggle for people.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Rachel. Thanks to everybody at Our Daily Bread for helping administer that program and for the future help, hopefully with the CDBG money that we hope to receive soon. and for the future help, hopefully with the CDBG money that we hope to receive soon. All right. Item 6C, approved budget amendment reflecting planned expenditures and donation revenue for the construction of Phase Two at Strickland Park. Mr. McClinney.
Evening, Mayor and Council. John McClinney, Special Projects Director. Thought I'd give you a little bit of a project update before I get into the budget amendment. We are making progress on Phase Two. We had planned to begin some of the site work with the concrete sidewalks and footings last week. Needless to say, the winter weather took care of that plan, so weather is always an issue with this kind of project. The playground equipment has been ordered. It should arrive the last week of March. The safety surface is out for bids, and those bids will open this Wednesday, February 24th. We have a contract pending on the restroom and shelter upgrades, and the tentative start date will probably be the first or second week of March. The shade structure was en route last week. It also was delayed due to weather. We're attempting to ascertain the new delivery date. Hope to have that this afternoon, but now I hope to have it in the morning. We have not been able to make contact yet. And the target date for opening the playground is tentatively June 1. Everything that we have control over is on schedule. The weather is the one thing that could derail us, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of say on that. The project is funded primarily by donated funds, and it's going to include the Stillwater Makes a Change Grant, some from the Rotary Club, the Stillwater Community Foundation, and State Farm, and that will cover the majority of the expenses for the project. There's $135,000 in donated funds currently on deposit with Mya's Promise. And as the city expends funds for the project, Mya's Promise will reimburse us as we make progress. We need a budget amendment to reflect the planned expenditures and donation revenue, and we recommend a motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting planned expenditures and donation revenue for construction of Phase Two of the Strickland Park Playground Project.
Thank you, John. Counselors, questions, comments?
Well, of course I have some. We're so excited, obviously, to be finally at this stage where we can be working on Phase Two. And just a reminder, since we haven't, you know, kind of asked this endeavor for a little while, Phase One was funded by the Community Development Block Grant that the city ascertained. That equipment has all been installed. There's a beautiful safety surface, a kind of fake grass artificial turf that's there that's easily accessible for people of all different kinds of abilities, and lots of fun play equipment that's also meant to kind of be inclusive to children and families with all different kinds of abilities and of all different ages. And Phase Two will bring a whole nother set of equipment. So we'll have a whole swing area that will be installed with some really amazing swings. The Rotary Club donated this huge, kind of donut swing that kids can sit in and be together in. The Community Foundation, one of our community members through the Community Foundation, donated an expression swing which allows families to face one another when they're at the swing set with their children. And then there'll also be kind of an igloo, kind of this cozy dome that will be helpful for children with sensory and processing challenges. And then merry-go-round, a merry-go-all that will be, has kind of constructs some things that will be, help it to be more accessible to children. And then, of course, the State Farm grant that our community helped us obtain last year will help make our restroom facility a year-round facility. It'll put a changing table in that restroom facility. We have a really neat art project that will happen there as well. And then the style tour will kind of get upgraded with accessible furniture and just kind of a face lift there as well. So, and then on top of all of that, literally, the Mya's Promise Foundation has funded, been fundraising for shade structure that will provide some much-needed shade over the playground. So it's amazing to see what kind of all started with, you know, the Community Development Block Grant and just how many layers of love and care and dollars have been added to that to make this really extraordinary project happen.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Looking forward to seeing all that in place by June 1st at the absolute latest, right, John?
Hope so.
Do we have a motion on the budget amendment?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a budget amendment reflecting expenditures and donation revenue for the construction of Phase Two Strickland Park. Teresa, please call a roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Item 6E, we have an update on our strategic plan from Becky Taylor and Brady Moore.
Good evening once again, Mayor and Counselors. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. One of the first projects given to the new innovation office was updating the City of Stillwater Strategic Plan. In just a short amount of time, working for the City of Stillwater, I'm daily amazed at the incredible work of city staff, as clearly seen from the crews that worked day in and day out during our big freeze last week to keep us safe and keep our city operating. The goal of this presentation is to showcase the impressive work of the City of Stillwater and its plan for continuous improvement, as well as cast a vision as to the direction of our community. I bring to this position my perspective as a new team member of this organization, coupled with my perspective as an engaged and invested resident over the last decade who cares deeply for my community and the people within it. I hope this strategic plan both honors the hard work of the city staff, as well as inspires direction for continued forward movement. The updated strategic plan came about through lots of listening, learning about the history of the past iterations of this plan, touring city facilities and departments, hearing from the experts in the field, combing through resident surveys and input, and collectively casting vision to where we want to be as a community. It is also important to note that this plan is not meant to be static, but instead a dynamic guide for our organization and community. This gets us to a starting point, but it's just the beginning and not at all the finish line. When Brady and I first started working on updating the strategic plan, we thought it imperative that we start with the mission and vision. After collecting input, listening, learning, and observing, we crafted the mission and vision you see here. It is not a change in direction, but instead a clear statement as to where we are, why we do what we do, where we are going, and for whom we work, for every resident. A mission should provide the reason why, and the vision should answer where we are going. Everything that follows in the strategic plan answers how we will get there. So our mission, to build a vibrant community for every resident through our efficient services, shared spaces, and smart planning. Our vision, Stillwater will be a dynamic, inclusive community with a spirit of innovation, growth, and opportunity. Our standards of excellence speak to our values as city employees. In everything we do, from wastewater to transportation to infrastructure to utilities to waste management, the airport, and everything in between, everything we do should exemplify our standards of being connected, performance-driven, proud, respectful, responsive, and trustworthy. The strategic plan is organized in a similar way to previous versions. We have six priorities that cover areas that council have considered to be of highest priority. These have not changed in meaning or intent, just updated to more accurately describe the work. Each priority has three objectives, which are specific, concrete outcomes related to each priority. Each objective has three strategies. Strategies are the examples of how we plan to approach each objective. And then, as Brady will describe later, our key performance indicators, or KPIs, demonstrate how effectively our organization is achieving key objectives and strategies. Included in the online packet is a draft PDF that includes the entire strategic plan. For the sake of time and everyone's continued interest, we will only be highlighting a few examples of objectives and strategies, but I would love if you followed along and see the full plan by looking later at some point at the PDF in the packet. So Priority Number One is Effective Services and Accountable Government. To provide effective services and accountable government for all citizens by practicing fiscal responsibility, transparency, and outstanding customer service. One objective for Priority Number One is to continue to be an accountable, ethical, and responsible local government. Transparency is essential in what we do as a local government. It is integral to the health of our organization and the community that the City of Stillwater continues to be held accountable, continues to be ethical in every decision, and continues to carry the heavy responsibility of everything that comes along with being a local government. One strategy that exemplifies how we will reach this objective is to assure sustainability and positive life cycle costs of initiatives, funding streams, and projects. We aim to be fiscally responsible, and doing so means the sustainability and life cycle cost of any project, initiative, or policy is examined and considered. Another objective of the first priority is to connect the standards of excellence to all aspects of city government. Again, as an organization, we strive for the standards mentioned earlier to be integrated into everything we do, inside the walls of municipal government and out. On my first day of work during orientation, I was given a booklet that described all the standards of excellence. And as I walked down the hallway to my office, I saw posters lining the walls with city employees being honored for displaying the standards in their daily tasks. And as I went to the break room for the first time, above the sink is a reminder of the standards so that we do not leave dirty dishes in the sink for someone else to clean up. The standards are more than just good customer service. They should be involved in everything we do as our organization and integrated values of what we do. Priority Number Two is Motivated Management. To serve with integrity and demonstrate proactive leadership, motivated management, and smart planning skills that focus on results needed to create a better community. We value proactive, not just reactive, leadership, motivated and inspired leaders that are strategic and want the best for the entire community. One objective that focuses on this priority is to continue to attract and retain positive, forward-thinking, experienced, and skilled staff. Every department strives to attract and retain quality staff. One strategy that increases this effort is to engage in cooperative efforts to provide on-the-job learning, work-study, and internship opportunities for OSU students. Being neighbors with OSU and leveraging this partnership can allow us to have a mutually beneficial relationship with students. Students can gain real-life experiences through work-study and internship opportunities, and the city can gain from the students' insights, as well as gain from the wealth of knowledge and skills housed at the university. It's a partnership that's a win-win and one that has many possibilities. Another objective for Priority Two, Motivated Management, is to connect effective services with creative solutions and efficient processes. A strategy that can help us towards this objective is to encourage collaboration among departments and the sharing of resources and elimination of waste. This strategy focuses on the sharing of resources, which includes items, ideas, and skill sets. It's working outside of silos and across departments. And I've been impressed with how naturally city staff already do this, and it's a testament to the motivated management at the City of Stillwater. We need to continue our efforts here and maximize the collaboration in order to find even more innovative and creative solutions. Priority Number Three is Safe Community. To promote a safe and secure community for all residents through equitable services, enhanced relationships, and responsive care. Undoubtedly, living in a safe community is a priority to each and every resident and continues to be of top priority to the City of Stillwater. One objective that allows us to have a safe community is to create proactive and preventative programs that focus on public safety. And a strategy to accomplish this objective is to continue offering focused outreach programs that promote a culture of safety and build trust with all residents. Through the Citizens Academy to Martin Luther King Junior Day March involvement, to fire safety programs in school and more, it is important to be proactive in building trust with all residents and offering focused outreach programs as we move forward. A second objective that promotes a safe community is to continue to focus on effective and timely responses when an emergency or threat arises. One strategy that reaches this objective is to formulate and analyze a wide range of emergency operation plans that focus on planning, response, recovery, and mitigation. The perfect example for this strategy in action is our team before, during, and after the big freeze last week. Rob with Emergency Management brought all the directors together and coordinated all planning and response efforts collaboratively, getting everyone on the same page prior to the event. Each person knew who to contact if something happened. The operation plan was in place. It was acted upon as the days continued and as the series of events continued to worsen. The planning and response relied on everyone at the city, from waste management, utilities, the water plant, police and fire, public works. And the coordinated effort and the time spent on planning, response, recovery, and mitigation allowed us to get through the unprecedented weather last week. The fourth priority is Connected Spaces, which seeks to develop a strong sense of place that recognizes the interconnectedness of people, buildings, and public systems, such as transportation, utilities, and parks, that best serve the needs of the public. This priority covers a lot. It covers our roads, parks, trails, utilities, and everything in between. It is also a priority that many of our residents seem to share, as seen through surveys, comments, and feedback received regularly. One objective that relates to Connected Spaces is to create forward-thinking policies and practices that result in developing and maintaining our infrastructure integrity. A strategy to reach this objective is to make decisions that meet the demands of current customers while always planning for the needs of future generations. A current example of this strategy is the Water 2040 Initiative. Water 2040 addresses current water demands, but also addresses future growth and development and strategically plans infrastructure to meet the future demands. Another objective that seeks to achieve Connected Spaces is to continue practices that provide a well-planned and highly reliable public utility and infrastructure systems that serve the needs of the public. One of the strategies that meets this objective is to plan, maintain, repair, and continuously enhance streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails while considering all modes of travel. This strategy speaks to many of our residents' concerns over roads and sidewalks. It also speaks to the need to make sure all abilities are considered when maintaining and enhancing our transportation system. And then Priority Number Five is Unique Culture. To cultivate partnerships that enhance the unique culture of Stillwater with equal access to service and amenities, strong and connected neighborhoods, and a thriving economy and business atmosphere. This priority used to be called Quality of Life, but we wanted something that captured more directly what we want in our community. We do not want to make Stillwater into another city. We want Stillwater to have its own unique culture that retains talent, attracts visitors, and makes a good home to each resident. One objective that aims for a unique culture is to continue to preserve livability in Stillwater's strong and distinctive neighborhoods. A strategy that gets us closer to this objective is to identify partnerships to create more affordable housing options for current residents, which may attract industry and retain talent. Affordable housing is necessary and important for many reasons. We need affordable housing for our current residents, and we can be creative in identifying the partnerships to work towards this important strategy. But affordable housing also attracts industry, and it can help us retain talent. It's important on many fronts. And another objective in Priority Five is to connect residents with diverse opportunities for artistic, historic, wellness, educational, cultural, and recreational pursuits. A strategy aimed at reaching this objective is to broaden public-private partnerships to increase opportunities for further development, to maximize current spaces, and to collaborate on projects that increase resident satisfaction and draw visitors to Stillwater. We want Stillwater's culture to be one that invites visitors in, that keeps our students from leaving, and that encourages safe gatherings of neighbors. A unique culture can do just that in Stillwater. And lastly, Priority Number Six is Engaged and Invested Residents. To encourage participation and understanding of government through outreach and inclusiveness initiatives that inspire trust, confidence, and ownership in local government. This goes beyond just voting and volunteering to include ownership as well. We want residents to be co-creators alongside local government and working together to make Stillwater all that it can and should be. One way of inviting residents to be co-creators of our community is to create an environment where people can find or share the right information at the right time. And a strategy to reaching this objective is to provide open and transparent access to information. This can be done through our press releases, various social media platforms, and the website, and provide avenues for open and transparent access to information. But we can also strive for creative ways that provide even more open communication and transparency in all that we do. And a second objective is to connect the public with opportunities to be involved in the process at the appropriate level. A strategy to reach this objective is to encourage broad participation of residents through meetings, forums, through meetings, forums, task forces, and other interpersonal opportunities to create deeper conversations between residents, elected officials, and city staff. We have many opportunities to creatively engage our residents and to become co-creators with them. So this was a broad overview of our six priorities and a few objectives and strategies inside each priority. As I mentioned earlier, please take a look at the full strategic plan, which can be found inside the packet online. Next, Brady is going to explain the key performance indicators and how we aim to measure our progress as an organization and a larger community.
Before we move on to the Brady's section, I just wanted to mention that I really like the change from priority five, from quality of life, to culture. And a tiny suggestion on strategy 223 that talks about work-study and internship opportunities for OSU students. I wonder if there's a possibility of also including Meridian students in that strategy.
Good point. Yes, thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Brady Moore, Chief Performance Innovation Officer. It's my pleasure to be presenting to you for the first time tonight. And as Becky mentioned, I'll be talking about the newest addition to our strategic plan, key performance indicators, or as Monty already defined to us tonight, is KPIs. Key performance indicators are measurable values that demonstrate how effectively an organization is achieving key objectives and strategies. Effective KPIs are always closely linked to an organization's strategic goals. So as Becky walked us from a new mission and vision down through our new objectives and strategies, the next step is implementing these strategies and striving to continuously improve on key performance indicators. Benefits of KPIs in an organization like the City of Stillwater include increased focus, greater accountability, reduced waste, better decisions, and of course, better performance. And as a quick reminder regarding the history of KPIs for the City of Stillwater, back in 2019, in an effort to make sure that this process was citizen-driven, a KPI citizen task force, working together with staff, selected performance measures that would be most relevant to the community and to the City of Stillwater organization. So we definitely want to reiterate, for a municipality to have a successful strategic plan, the focus needs to be on the desired outcomes of its customers, or in our instance, the citizens of Stillwater. So Becky and I, being new to the organization, were able to pick up where COVID had postponed the work of the Citizen KPI Task Force. We collected these KPI selections from 2019, and working again with our current staff and department directors began to determine the initial KPIs that the staff would be implementing. And as an organization that buys into the concept of continuous improvement, it is the goal of staff to track the data of the selected KPIs and develop process and procedures to achieve the desired outcomes of each measurable. And I'll add, as I was having these conversations with our directors and managers, I appreciated their honesty, and not only just hearing about the love of the work that they do, about how 2020 was a challenging year with COVID, and it definitely affected some of their data, but that we are all looking forward to better measurables ahead. So for tonight, I want to quickly highlight five of the KPIs that have been selected for each priority. And for priority number one, effective service and accountable government. On average, for FY '20, we spent $885 in expenditures per person. In 2020, we were able to maintain our high level of AA bond rating for the Stillwater Utility Authority. In FY '20, our efforts in obtaining grants resulted in being awarded $7.7 million. .43% was our average charge-off for utility and building for 2020. And in keeping with our years of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, for FY '20, we had zero audit findings. Each of these KPIs tie back to a specific strategy, but in an effort to save time tonight, I'll highlight just one for each priority. So for instance, the $7.7 million that was awarded in FY '20 ties back to strategy 1.2.3, leverage resources and maximize grants where appropriate. Moving on to priority two, motivated management. The five selected KPIs to show you tonight that tie back to strategies are 24 facility safety audits were performed in 2020, 154 balancing acts, budget submissions by citizens. Our average block-by-block pavement condition rating that Monty referred to earlier was 69. And this is in great instrument for Monty and his team to evaluate our streets as it shows we are still trying to hit our goal of 75 to 78. In an effort to be more streamlined and efficient, last year, we submitted 2,155 online forms. And with new forms currently being converted to online, we hope to see this number dramatically increase in the future. And as a measurable to identify our ability to maintain and grow employees in their position, for 2020, our average tenure of full-time employees was 11 years. It's pretty outstanding. Again, tying these KPIs back to strategies, for the pavement condition rating that Monty mentioned earlier, this was a common touch point in our citizen surveys in the past, and they wanted to see our roads improved. So strategy 2.1.2 addresses this continued public outreach, or continued public outreach to help guide allocation of resources toward areas that residents have identified as needing improvement. For priority three, safe community, the initial KPI is highlighted here. For the Fire Marshal's team, 1,113 building life safety inspections were completed in 2020. In 2020, the National Fire Protection Association turnout standard was achieved just 65% of the time. And I'll add, I appreciate Chief Essery's desire to show this KPI when we talked about it. He shared with me how he wants to see this number improved. In 2020, we had 7,913 training hours for our police department. The average police response time for 2020 was 3.39 minutes. And Rob and our SEMA team acquired 1,940 training hours in the COVID-challenged year of 2020. And for the KPI that I'll tie back to a specific strategy is the police training hours as it relates to strategy 3.3.1, provide comprehensive departmental training that promotes employee safety, service to the community, efficiency of operations, and professionalism in all areas. And we loved Becky and I talking to Chief Watts about this small card that they all carry, all the officers carry with them at all times, and it points to these four departmental priorities. So Becky and I were excited that we were able to work them in to that strategy. Priority four, connected spaces. As Becky mentioned, this so much falls under priority four. From our parks and shared spaces to our streets, utilities, and infrastructure. So the five KPIs I'll quickly highlight. In 2020, 344 tons of asphalt were placed to repair roads. In an effort to make sure our underground infrastructure is properly maintained, we inspected 1,509 manholes. In addition, 654 water valves were inspected and maintained. And a number that our electric department takes pride in is our System Availability Index, which was at 99.88 for 2020. And I'll note that had the October ice storm not occurred, we would have been at 99.99. Nearly perfect. And the 19.72 kilowatt-hours is the average customer power consumption in 2020. And this is an interesting number that Lauren likes to track with his team is because actually our average utility customer power consumption has actually gone down in recent years, which is interesting. And the one KPI that I'll highlight and tie back to a strategy is the manhole and water valve inspections. These both tie back to strategy 4.1.3, prioritizing funding and support resource allocation to maintain existing infrastructure assets and to plan for future growth. This brings us to priority number five, unique culture. The selected KPIs shown here point to the progress that we are making in keeping Stillwater moving forward in both character, growth, and opportunities. The first is the community center visits. In 2020, was 81,510. This number was significantly down because of the pandemic, but they are hopeful for numbers to be back up soon. And they also have been so helpful even in this time with events like the early voting in November. The next figure shows the amount of money being spent in capital improvements in our community. This total for FY '20 was 28.3 million. The next two, 104 new residential permits and 70 new commercial permits are a great way to track growth in Stillwater. And library visits, 81,029 for 2020 was another number affected by COVID. But the library has been very successful in pivoting, especially in the way that they reached out to help seniors get registered for the vaccine process online. Both the community center and library visits relate back to strategy 5.3.3, leverage partnerships to fulfill the diverse needs and abilities of residents while working towards more inclusivity and accessibility in all events, spaces, and amenities. And lastly, priority six, engaged and invested residents. These are the KPIs that should indicate how well we are reaching and making connection with residents. In 2020, we published 167 media releases. We may have actually hit that number last week. Website visits for 2020 was 271,000. Open records request was 155 in 2020. YouTube views was 143,000. And a great number to track on this list, 71 residents involved on boards and committees. Two of these indicators, the 21,000 webpage visits and the 140,000 YouTube views directly ties back to strategy 6.2.1, provide up-to-date content on the city's website, social media, and local government access channel. And finally, we are excited to bring a live KPI dashboard to our website. This KPI dashboard is a way to show the commitment to continuous improvement. And as we grow this dashboard with future data, we will be able to graphically show history and trends on the KPIs. Another reason I'm excited for this dashboard is because it can showcase the great work that is being done and being achieved by our organization. And I'll say, as being a newcomer to this organization, I've been so impressed to see the professionals that we have throughout the departments. And I like that this dashboard, in some small way, can display their hard work and achievements. And I'd like to reiterate, these initial KPIs are not meant to be final. These are getting us to the starting line. And as new objectives are brought to you, are brought to us by you, the council, and the citizens of Stillwater, we can add new KPIs to match new strategies required to meet those objectives. And to wrap up, Becky and I have enjoyed working on this project together to update the City of Stillwater strategic plan. We would love to hear any feedback and questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. Thank you, Becky. That's a lot of work that you guys have put into going through that strategic plan. And the KPI stuff especially is really cool to see. Glad that we're making some progress on getting that stuff up to date. Councilors, other questions, comments for the team?
Just want to say thank you to Becky and Brady. I think this is your first big presentation since you've been hired, and you hit it out of the ballpark. Thank you. I say that because I know today's opening baseball day, and I know the mayor...
Yesterday, actually.
But I did, I really appreciated, there was a lot of information, and I appreciated the way it was laid out. And it certainly arrived. There is a lot more information on the online packet, so I really encourage citizens to look at that. But thank you for doing the KPI indicators. That was a really great way to highlight all the things that the city staff and our colleagues do to keep our city running. And I look forward to seeing that grow. And I'm very excited that it's going to be online for everyone to see. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
What's the next step for us on this thing? We've got to approve a strategic plan eventually, correct? Anybody know the...
Yeah, we'll take back the feedback that Councilor Darlington had, Vice Mayor Darlington, and we will... Any other feedback as you guys continue to consume it? If there's any things you'd like to see adjusted, we can make those adjustments. But yeah, I guess it can be approved at a later date? In May.
In May. Okay, excellent. Thank you all. Okay, that takes us to 6E, an update on review of design and construction standards. Monty Carnes? And Roger, are you coming?
Once again, good evening. I'm here along with Roger Gose, representing the committee, the staff, and the community, working at revising our standards, design and construction standards for developments. On that committee was Don Bishop. Don represents the construction and contracting community. Roger Gose, who represents the design engineers and developers. Brian Edmondson of the city staff, who represents our public infrastructure inspection. Kelly Hitch is our water and wastewater maintenance and repair superintendent. James Driscoll, who's in charge of water utilities. Zach Henson with stormwater drainage. John and Paula from the city manager's office to keep us focused and keep us in line and to crack the whip. We've made some real good progress. We've taken the approach on the standards that fewer words and more pictures are better. Truly, a thousand, a picture's worth a thousand words, and we've done that. I believe Roger has the statistics of how many pages it looks like that we're going to be removing from the overall document. We have some areas that we need some guidance from the council on how to proceed. I'm going to list those first, and then we'll kind of go into them a little more in depth. First one is, there's a proposal that the city would go back to providing the fire hydrants to developers. And then they would reimburse the city for the cost of those hydrants. Another proposal to allow contractors to make water service connections. Another proposal discussing how we take care of deposits for meters over one inch. Another proposal on allowing exceptions to our current city standards, requiring a minimum operating pressure of 40 PSI and the water distribution system at all times, under all conditions, except fire flows and flushing operations. Another one regarding how we do the modeling of water and wastewater collection systems during development. And lastly, we'd like to begin the discussion on steps that we may need to start taking to prepare fire flow service in the rural area of the community and as adjacent to the city limits. So first up on those is the fire hydrants. Our current practice is for developers, contractors, to furnish and install hydrants as part of the construction or the development, just like they would any other pipe or valve fitting. The idea is that because the water utility purchases our fire hydrants in bulk, The idea is that because the water utility purchases our fire hydrants in bulk, our costs for hydrants are sometimes lower. It would also help make sure that we're keeping uniform hydrants that meet our specs in the system. Maybe a higher reliable maintenance of the system. Developers would reimburse the city for the actual cost, which means that could be lower for them, which would be lower for the development and the housing. Again, the city provided this service in the past, discontinued it for several reasons, and I will tell you that city finance is not, well, has concerns about the proposal at this time, and Christie's here to answer any questions in that regard. So, open that up. Roger, did you have anything you wanted to add?
This one was just brought forward. Fire hydrant costs have gone way up since, since I've been involved for 40, 45 years, and it's just a way to help reduce development costs slightly, show a good faith that yes, we're encouraging development. I have heard that finance has an issue with how to book this. I mean, this used to get booked when everything was on paper and pencil. I'm thinking the computers we've got now can handle it. The developers put out, put up a fee right up front with what it's, you know, there's a lot of costs, so those get into the system some way. Also, in this whole thing, I don't think we've, well, council doesn't know this yet. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting, so before any project starts, people are going to sit down, they know who at City Hall's in charge, they know what fees they have to pay. That's all going to be on the table. Right now, it's a little hit and miss on that. That's a perfect time. Here's what all your fees are, you know how many fire hydrants are on the job, write a check and get going. And, I mean, if it isn't paid, there was a concern about it getting paid, not paid before CO. I think it ought to be paid before you get going, you know, go ahead and get the fire hydrants ordered. And I'm sure staff has some time lag getting fire hydrants. I'm pretty sure they probably buy them by the pallet versus onesie-twosies or half a dozen. So that's sort of the developments side to ask on that.
Yeah, I want to, I want to address the discussion just a minute about requiring the pre-construction. We're also doing that for pre-design. We're starting to treat the development just like we would a capital improvement project, where we have everybody in the room. The people in the room from the development contractor are going to be required to have the ability to make the financial commitments at that meeting, and so there'll be no surprises of what we expect. That also puts a burden on staff, that we have to be ready for that meeting as well, and that's only fair to the developers and the contractors, that we don't come back later and say, oh, we meant, we forgot to tell you this, we were meant to tell you that as well. So we'll have a checklist, we'll handle that just like we do any of our major capital improvement projects. I don't know if Christie, I believe she may be online, if she had any comments that she wanted to make as well. Yes, there she is.
Yes, I can make some comment. I just feel like if we're going to move forward with this, we need to really vet the, kind of the parameters of this program carefully. As Monty mentioned, we did offer this, a similar type of a program. It's been many years ago now. We kind of got burned on that a little bit. It was problematic in tracking the parts that were being issued out to contractors and billing for those appropriately, and then being able to collect those fees. And so if we're looking at some sort of a prepayment, that takes care of some of the concern. Some other concerns that I might have is just developing, making sure that we develop a good way to recoup our true costs, because our cost is not just the cost of the hydrant itself. It would be our staff time to gather quotes or do bids, to order the products, to receive those products in, to keep track of those products while they're in our warehouse, and then to issue those out to the contractor, and then facilitate any payment for that. I haven't seen any cost comparisons yet on what it's costing our developers or our contractors to purchase these on their own, so that's something further that I think that we need to look.
We'd be ready to take any thoughts as to whether we want to proceed with this, drop it now or continue to investigate it, and also answer any questions.
So is the idea here, the city gets these hydrants cheaper just by buying them in bulk? Is that the idea, or is there some kind of other incentive for the city government when they buy these things?
I think there's two incentives. One is perhaps we can buy them in bulk and save, save some money. The other is making sure that we don't end up with some off-brand hydrant for some reason that slips through the cracks, and that we do in fact have the style and type of hydrants that we do. Is that a huge concern? No, but, you know, that would be one of the pluses.
Thursday was the first time we heard about this concern. It was never brought up in our meetings, and I think Christie makes a good point. I will find out in the next 48 hours how much our developers, utility contractor are paying for meters, and I'll get that back here, because they're calling up their vendor, they're getting a price at that moment for some parameter, and I will get that back to Monty. And hopefully, the city can call their utility contract, you know, their, whoever's purchasing for your water department, and find out what that cost is. I don't know if you'll do a six-month bid, or if you do these things on phone quotes, just, I know you have them in stock. It's, I think it's something you keep in stock. Now, you only might keep two or three, but we have two or three cars, take them out, you guys are ready for it. I will make that commitment if we want to pursue this.
I think from a fact-finding perspective, it might, I guess, be interesting to know how many, like, how many hydrants do we install, I mean, developers or otherwise? And how often is this occurring? You know, is it a few here and there, so not, you know, I don't know, it just would be interesting to know that as we're looking at total costs and just how much of a burden this might be for staff, or how important it might be. I do seek that the idea of consistency across the type of hydrant, I mean, that seems reasonable and helpful, but I think it's hard to, it's hard to say if it's worth a while, if we kind of don't know how often this is happening, how much the developers are really saving, if we are able to provide this in some sort of bulk fashion.
Christie, are we resellers of any other equipment to private developers?
We are not, and that's just another general concern, is that we're, you know, the city's not in the business to resale things or be a local provider of any sort of fixtures or part. And so there's just some other, there's just many things we need to think through, you know, how's the exchange of payment going to happen, and how's our warehouse staff going to know that the product's been paid for and that they can release those products? And there's just things to think through before...
Yeah, without, without having that kind of structure in place, this, that would all have to be put in place for something like that. And to me, that means it's got to be really worth it, if that's something we want to take on, because we're going to add a whole process around how we accept payment, how we process orders, all that kind of stuff. So, I don't, it certainly seems like it's worth investigating and seeing if it's worth it, but I think we want to make sure that we're not just going, oh, the wholesale price to the city is 50 bucks, and the wholesale price to the contractor is 75, so let's just do it here, because then we're not taking into account all the other factors that might go into it. So as long as we get some of that research, we can figure out whether it's a good idea or not.
Right now...
Are there any liability concerns? From a resale perspective, would we have any liability concerns?
I don't know.
Right now, the, there's one subdivision that's going to have, that has at least 50 fire hydrants going in. We have two more that I know of, I'm not, I haven't seen the plans, I'm not involved in the engineering, but I would say there's at least 100 hydrants there, and so there's quite a few of these going on. And you're reselling to somebody that is gifting this product back to the citizens of Stillwater. Every bit of infrastructure that's put in is given back to the city as an asset.
I don't think gifting is the right term, but yes, it is coming back.
Some communities actually give letters of gift.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's, yeah, so, I mean, like I said, I think, I think we need to look and see how it works out overall, but, you know, if it helps, if it helps reduce a substantial cost for developers, I'm certainly, I'm sure we'd be willing to look into it. It's just a matter of how much are we really saving them, and how much is it adding to the city's, you know, new, new process that we have to develop?
I also have a question. Monty said perhaps we can buy these at a bulk price, but perhaps we cannot, so, I mean, there's a lot of data that needs to be gathered to make a good decision.
I do want to make one point, and, you know, there's a lot of people in the room when we started the office work, and for whatever reason, none of us, including me, thought that we ought to check with Christie. So the first that Christie heard about this proposal was last week as well, and, and so I want to make sure that we're not throwing Christie into the blast, or sound like we are. I mean, she, I really thought it was going to be a no-brainer, and, you know, she immediately said, whoa, 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 whoa. So, and one side note, Paul and I had a conversation with FAA this, the previous week about some stuff, and in that it came up audits. And I said, you know, we've got 40 years of having clean audits and zero things written, and our finance group does a great job in that, and every new director is told, woe be to the individual that messes that record up. So we're very appreciative of Christie and her thoughts and everything she does to keep us going straight. The next item is water service connections. The current practice is for our water crews to make connections when the connection is not included in the construction or the development. So let me explain that. When the developer, contractor comes in and puts in the infrastructure, including the water, they now install the water service connections to the lots before the houses are even started. And so we get them underneath the roads before we put the roads in, and they cap them off. And they make those connections as part of the infrastructure improvements. And then when it comes time to build the house, get a water meter, then, you know, the city comes out and installs the water meters. The proposal is that in, that there are times when we're doing infill, mainly infill, where the water lines are in place, and the meter sizes are over an inch, inch or larger, and water utilities is busy, should we allow the water utility, or should we allow a contractor to come in and make that tap in that connection? There's good reasons for allowing that, there's good reasons not to. One is, that's a potable water system of which we're responsible for maintaining the water quality in that. So we want to be very careful about who actually works on those, those lines, and in fact, you have to be, have some, some level of license to do that. So, you know, it's like one of those things, I've known water utility contractors, I would not have been worried at all about them making those connections. I've known others that I wouldn't want, wouldn't want within 100 feet of making a connection. So, if we go this route, I think we need to have some pretty strict guidelines and approval on how we do that. Anything else, Roger?
Yes, about the time Boulder Creek was going in, I think that's, not Boulder, Berry Creek, I'm sorry, 10-plus years ago, 15. We pretty much really started putting the water taps in the utility package and getting those water lines under the road, because if you didn't, then the city was having to come back and bore under the roads. That's a lot of expense to the city. You had to have the city available to do it. Our companies, we just started throwing them in the package, and it was just, it's an extra cost to the developer. It is an extra cost to the developer, but it gets done. And our Public Works Inspector is out there witnessing those taps. They're run across the road, they're capped, so when they pressure up the water line, we know we don't have any leaks. Now we're not have to dig back under the road, dig in somebody's front yard just after they put the sod down, all that kind of stuff. So, there were some developments that were having trouble getting water taps. Well, they weren't putting them in along with the water line, and it put pressure on the water department. But I think these water taps ought to be allowed to be made by a licensed plumber, witnessed by the city inspector, or a utilities contractor that's properly trained through the water department. It will take some pressure off of your water department during water line breaks, which I got enough of right now. You know, so it's, it's, it's to help speed that up and still get proper connections. I'm with Monty, there's a lot of people we don't want touching that water line.
Questions?
I mean, that seems like something that if the water department comes up with a specific set of standards that says this is, this is who we allow and when we allow it, I can't imagine the council's going to second-guess them on that. I mean, as long as the water utilities department, like you said, I mean, it's their job to make sure we're getting safe water out. And so their recommendation on that is going to be, I think, paramount in terms of, I can't imagine we'd make a decision on that right now, just other than to say the water department should come up with, with parameters that make sense and put them in the, put them in the policies.
And that's exactly what we were looking for. If you're open to that, then we would develop those parameters. I'm sorry, I interrupted somebody.
Well, I'm mayor, and Monty, I also, this is just a really good example of, I mean, I can't make decisions on, it happens a lot of times that things are delayed, because, I mean, what's a lot of times? And what's a delay? There's, there's just no data with this to make a decision. And I agree, there's no way I would make a decision on this without a plan from the water utilities people.
And thank you for those comments. Again, we're, we're not asking for decisions tonight, we're just asking for guidance, and these would be the type of input that we would like to have, as to what you need to see to make a decision.
Much more data and a proposal from the water utility people.
Okay. Moving on to the next one, something kind of similar about water. Currently, over a one-inch water meter, you come in, make an application for that meter, you pay, I believe, a $50 processing fee, then once it's approved, and there's other fees that go with that, the water capacity fee, wastewater fees as well. And we actually bill for the actual cost of the meter, the time and materials for our crews to put them in as, as we go forward. So the proposal is, again, kind of back to the strike, let everybody know upfront what's going on, we just collect a $1,000 deposit, then we move on and do the work, and then we would either refund or invoice the additional expense on those projects. And we're just kind of looking to get your thoughts on, on that as well.
I think this...
Did you run that by Christie, Monty?
Christie has seen this report, and I have not had any comments on this with her, but I also have not discussed this particular item with her in depth, or even at all.
And I'll just say that I am in support of having some sort of a prepayment, because it just helps wait it on the line if we have problems with collecting that bill from the contractor.
So, really, we're just talking about taking a payment upfront instead of having to figure out specific fees down the road on two or three different steps, and, yeah, I mean, that seems simplified and...
I think this is a great addition. The $1,000, I'd like to see some data, I'll beat you to it, Commissioner Darlington. I'd like to see some data, but let's make sure the thousands within the ballpark of what we need. the thousands within the ballpark of what we need. The worst thing that happened, one of the worst things that happens to a developer is he puts down 50 bucks, and before he can get a CO, he's got to write another check for $2,500 or some number. So, if we have a magnitude now, it will be very helpful.
Also, Monty, as you were talking earlier about this kind of larger process of sitting down with the development community and establishing kind of, you know, here are the people involved, here's the, the things involved, and here's some of the fees involved, will that kind of be a known, I know that would be different for each development, but it should be a known quantity, shouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am, that, that would be on the checklist of items that we would discuss, both at the pre-design conference, and then again at the pre-construction conference as well.
So, maybe it's just a matter of kind of looking at a typical or average development to understand, going through that, that worksheet or checklist to understand kind of what an average or typical amount would need to be.
And, and we can do that exercise without any trouble?
I think that is kind of an aside, I think that would be a really great opportunity for transparency around development to kind of walk somebody, or walk the public. I don't know how we would present it, if it's at a council meeting, or a, some sort of website function or something, but to kind of walk people through what that looks like. It seems like we've had some folks just recently that are, you know, going through this process and understanding like, oh, gosh, I can't get the water meter that I need. I bought this property and didn't know that, or I didn't have this, that, I think, could be really beneficial once that list or process is in place to make that, I don't know, go through that in a public way.
It's a good point. I've jotted those notes down. Thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, moving on to the proposal about the minimum water pressure, I want to make it clear that we're not talking about normal conditions. We're talking about some of the extreme conditions. And there have been times when we have run scenarios, and in, in the most extreme worst case, far out in the future, you know, we end up with 38, 38.5 PSI versus 40. The reality is, we're only probably good plus or minus 10 PSI to begin with at, at that point in our, in our analysis. We're looking for a flexibility that, use a little engineering judgment and say, you know, for a couple of PSI, we're close enough, we're okay. Because when we don't, when we can't meet the 40, then we require the, the homeowner to install a booster pump to meet that worst-case scenario maybe once or twice. So, and, and is that really worth it for one and a half or two PSI in a subdivision where there may be four lots at the top of the hill, and nobody else in the subdivision has that issue? So, we're, we're looking for a little break in that, to allow that. Again, I think we're open to, well, we're open to anything. One thought is that perhaps you need to make sure the people of that lot understand that, that buy that lot and that house, that you're a little below what the minimum would be, and that if they want to put a pump in, they can. And exactly how we do that, whether that becomes part of the deed and the public record, that, that's fine. But we just want to get your thoughts on that. And if you tell us to stick with what we got, that's what we're going to do. But we're just kind of looking at that, that issue as well.
Monty, we had quite a, an issue with that a couple of years ago with North Tower Park. And, you know, again, in this proposal, if I have the house at the top of the hill that doesn't have the water pressure that is up to, up to the rest of the neighborhood, I would, it would be a big deal to me. And, you know, again, the, I mean, I would not be able to say anything about this, any, anything unless I had more, you know, what is the, what is the water quality people say, who are in charge of water pressure levels? Why, you know, what, what's, oh, one or two, you know, it's only two PSI off, you know, well, let's do three, you know? I mean, it's, it's too arbitrary. And, and there's no, no recommendation here from the water utility people.
And, and again, we're, before we go to that level and have those discussions, we just want to make sure you're open to the, open to the idea. Let's back up to Tower Park. And I don't think we're talking about a situation of Tower Park where you would have that many, that many lots. I'll also tell you that I was here when that tower was built before. That tower was originally designed to be, I believe, 20 or 30 feet taller. When the design engineers took that to FAA for approval, was, we were told that if the 0422 runway were to ever become an instrument landing, that water tower as designed would have been too high. And so, we had a discussion in this council chamber with the council about, do we leave it high, or do we bring it down lower? And knowing that that water pressure would be a little lower, but that it was also above what the Department of Environmental Quality required at the time. So, that was a very conscious decision. And, between the staff and the council is how deliberate, and that's, that's how we came up with that decision. But again, we're, we're not really thinking about a situation like that, that was rather unique. We're thinking about, again, more of the cases where, I'm thinking of one where it was four lots right at the top of the hill. And we scratched our heads, and we tried real, real hard about trying to figure out how, how we would get that extra one and a half PSI. Water quality doesn't come into it, because if you get the pipes too big, then the velocity's too, too small, and you don't get, you don't get to turn over the water you need, so the water's not as, not as fresh. So, Roger had some comments as well.
All this is doing is giving staff the leeway, and I, I want to just, I'd rather it say 10%. So, if it's within 10, they can make a recommendation to the city manager to approve the meter. Right now, it says 40. If it's not 40, Monty can approve it. And at the point that this is usually found out, the people already own the lots, and they've come in for a building permit or a water meter. And the city, I don't think has the resources even to go out and check all the vacant lots and see if we can serve them with water, and put it on a deed or some kind of restriction. So, if he could have 10%, then I think he could function most of the time. And that's a, that's a, not a one or two, it's 10%. Thank you.
So, Monty, we have, we put that 40 PSI requirement in place at some point in the recent future, or recent past, correct?
I believe so. I don't remember exactly when, but about 10 years, seven years, seven, eight years ago.
Okay. And it was because we were having issues like this? Because before that, it was up to what? I mean, how was it, how was this determined before we had a hard limit in place?
Well, I don't know about, at that point. I know back in the 80s, it was whatever the state minimum was, which I believe was 25 PSI at that time.
What's the state minimum now?
It's still 25.
And, and what happened if you didn't meet the state minimum? It was a hard, that was a hard stop, right?
Yeah, if you don't meet state minimum, you don't, you don't get approval from the state of Oklahoma.
I mean, I, I think, for whatever reason, eight years ago, we felt like this was the necessary thing to put in place to keep the problem of this, you know, oh, well, it's close enough, kind of, kind of issue. Now, I also understand that if you've got one or two houses, or one or two lots in a certain area, it may not be that big of a deal if it's too, too PSI low. I think, to Vice Mayor Darlington's point, I, I'd really like to know, what are we talking about here? Is this like two meters a year that, that, that this happens to? Is this like half the, half the meters we talk about in the city that we'd have to do this? I mean, how, how many specific meters do you think this would apply to that can get within four PSI of the 40? What is the, you know, what are, what are we talking about on a per lot cost if they have to, if they're at 36, and we want them to get to 40? You know, how much is involved in actually making that happen versus just giving them the 10% reduction? And if we're talking about a blanket 10% reduction, why wouldn't we just drop it to 36 in the first place and just say, that's the standard, right? I mean, because what I think, what I'm concerned about is that when that comes in at 11% low, we go, well, I mean, it's close enough to 10, you know, and now all of a sudden, the next two years, three years, six years down the road, we're down to, well, 25's good enough, right? And so, it's a slippery slope, I guess, is the, the argument.
It is a slippery, slippery slope. I think what, part of that that would make it less so is, it's the, it's the, under all conditions that, where the issues usually come in, it's not under normal circumstances, it's under all conditions.
Okay, so what you're saying-
And so, that's, I think that's where we are looking for in those extreme ends of the service. I mean, I don't know technically if, if this past week that we met 40 PSI everywhere.
Sure.
Even, even when we had, you know, the, without a line break.
Yeah.
So, it, it, so it's in those kind of extreme situations, and then you tell somebody, well, you know, if we have minus 10 degree temperature, or if we have 115 degree day, you know, you're going to have 38 instead of 40 PSI. And I think that is, that's where it kind of, is where we tend to see the problems, and, and we'll be happy to quantify those.
So, I don't, I don't even know what these reports look like, but, I mean, am I getting, if I've got this lot, and they're doing this analysis, and they're going to say, well, if you build here, you're going to be able to get, on average, 42 PSI, but under a heavy load, you're going to get 36? I mean, is that a range that is given in this report?
What, what we see, and we're going to address this a little bit further down the road as well, what we see from the developers' engineers is a hydraulic report. I'll tell you, I looked at the one today on Fry Farms, and it was 94 pages. And it highlighted lots, and it highlighted fire hydrant locations under various flows, and then the lowest pressure at that location. And it's a 94-page report. So, it's a very in-depth report. I will tell you that, there were absolutely no concerns at all on that one. I mean, it was real good pressure on all of those. It were, I think the lowest was in the 60s. So, I mean, that would not have been a problem. But they're a very, they're a very detailed report, and a lot of different runs are made. And, and so then, once we approve that, then it doesn't matter. If it's less than that, then, you know, we flag, and then, and we know that when that house is built, there's got to be a, a pump put on the house.
So, at, at some level, we're talking about just, even just a refinement of what numbers we're looking at when we're talking about this. Because we could say, we wanted a 40 million, 40 PSI standard, but that's, you know, of this measured number, not necessarily the absolute lowest that could ever occur.
And, and again, the thing for me is, under all conditions-
Yeah.
-all flows. Well, okay, how, how do you define that?
Well, that, I mean, I, again, that depends on what kind of report we're actually getting from these engineers, and how much, I mean, like you said, that the, the margin of error on a report like that has got to be a few PSI even in and of itself, right? So, if their number comes out at 38, I'm sure the margin of error is three or four PSI on either side of it, right? So, it's, I, I, it certainly makes sense to say we could refine, however, instead of just saying, the lowest possible number can never be below 40, and refine something along, you know, what, what numbers in the report we're looking at, and, and maybe, you know, refine that a little bit to give-
And it is not unusual for us to see, in, in the profession, to see a range of what something has to do with the caveat that you're only at the edge of those, in very unusual circumstances, you're not allowed to design, you design towards the middle, and then allow a few, a few outliers on the edge.
I, I mean, I, I think we have the standard for a reason, and I think we should stick with that, because we got there for a reason. But, but it does sound like there could be some, some nuancing of that requirement to make sure that it actually reflects engineering standard, right, in terms of how these numbers are, are actually come up with in the first place.
And we will, we will work on that and bring those back to you as well. The next, any, any other thoughts, questions on that, comments? Moving on to the next one, directly related this, is the, how we handle the water distribution and wastewater collection computer models. Our current practice is that, that we have models at the, at the city of those systems. A developer will model their system, then bring it to us, and then we check it against this city model. And if we've got issues, concerns, then we go back and forth. The idea is that maybe it makes more sense for staff to do the modeling. That, that doesn't mean we're going to design the system, or that, you know, we're responsible for that part. We would just do the modeling since we understand, hopefully, the, the people and staff will understand the model better. And then, would, would look at that and say, okay, these are the size of pipes you need. The developer would bring their data, they would bring their layout under this concept. Developer would bring their layout. Engineer would say, it looks to us like this size pipe, maybe as an initial start, and then we go from there. And then we fine-tune it. We would keep track of our hours, and then we would recoup that cost from the developer. Developer's going to have money in there for the engineer to be doing that work. So, it's really nonadditional cost to the engineer. We just think it's a little more efficient time from everybody and leads us to a better system. And I will tell you, as part of that, to start this, we, we will probably come back to you and tell you that we want to get our models updated, because it's been a number of years since those models have been updated. But that, you know, we will, that'll be a separate, really need to do that regardless of whether we do this or not. Roger, you got anything you want to add?
The modeling on this stuff is, is like, the city's water system or sewer system's a jigsaw puzzle. And when we bring in a subdivision, we bring in one piece and stick it in there. The city's model looks at, what does that do to all of the puzzle? The engineer's model is only, I'm tying on at three places, and can I meet it in here? It doesn't tell you that you may be sucking water down somewhere else, or overloading the sewer somewhere else. I think for the quality of the system, we ought to work out where the engineer brings the data in a tabular form. We all have the tables, or tabs, so that the city's personnel can put it in there, and analyze it right up front. I can- I contend they do that anyway, so you already have that cost. I'm not saying we don't need to pay, the development doesn't need to pay for it. Because if you're running your system right, you're going to go ahead and input that data in there anyway. So I, I'd like us to move in this direction if possible. Thank you.
Monty, does the output of that modeling, does it require like an engineering stamp, or anything?
Yes, it does, and, and Bill and I had, have had a pretty strong discussion about, on this. Are we taking over some of the contractors', I mean, some of the developers' responsibility, or design engineers' responsibilities? And risk and liability? Uh, it'd be a gray area. I would think if there were an issue, we're going to get dragged into it anyway, from that standpoint of, well, you approved the model. Or you approved the situation. So, um, I, I have less concern, I think the benefits outweigh that risk. And especially since we have some of that risk anyway. City attorney may disagree, but, but from my standpoint of, of being in the business for a long number of years, being a consultant and on the public, I think if we do it right, it's a, uh, less risk for everybody and, and for the overall system.
I would be really interested in maybe feedback from legal, as whether or not, you know, there's any liability, additional liability concerns with you guys using your steel for, for that.
I've made that note, and we will add that, uh, we'll add that to the report we bring to you later. We will also get with Christie as to what the proper reimbursement cost would be. Uh, I know Roger and I've had a few discussions, he mentioned something like $10 an hour. And I said, I said that, that's not very good to me, where we're renegotiating, renegotiating all of our engineering contracts. Any other thoughts? Okay, the last item, um, is another one that is starting to look into the future. As the city expands, or, and it really is development expands outside the city, what's, what's our responsibility, what should be our responsibility for trying to figure out some way to provide fire protection, uh, for those developments? That, that will be connecting either the rural water that we supply, or the rural water systems that we might own. So, uh, I'll tell you, Roger and I've had a lot of discussion about how to do this. And, and I don't know that we've come up with a good idea, other than we think it's something that needs to be discussed, and start looking at. It, it's, we don't see any real easy solutions. The rural water system is not designed for fire flow, for a lot of reasons. But we, we're starting to see developments that really aren't, are rural developments on large acres. They're starting to come in maybe on smaller, smaller lots. And so what, you know, what obligation do we have there? And in the future, if the backbone system is increased, and the development can't handle it, you know, what does that do? Or do we just look at the backbone system and, you know, have, um, a hydrant that, where you can fill a tanker, uh, for a rural fire system? Other piece that plays into that is, you know, we have some pretty strong development for the half mile connecting to the city limits, but nothing beyond that. So then, if we get too stringent in there, do people skip that half mile and then just jump further out? And then we have a half mile buffer, which may not be a bad idea either. But, you know, so it, there's a lot of things to think about. And I don't know that we're, we're looking for, I think we're just starting the discussion, and we think this is one that will take a lot of discussion, a lot of input. Councilor Darlington, I don't even know, uh, where to start collecting some of the data. Uh, I mean, certainly we can look at that projection of, of how many lots and, and how much of a problem that could be. That'd certainly be one of the places to start. But don't know what other data people might want to see, um, in terms of this. Roger, you got anything you want to add?
Monty, before you leave, I, I appreciate you looking ahead and thinking about this, but, I mean, I'm not even involved in this, and I think if I sat down for a little while, I could think of a lot of questions about data that I wanted to hear about, and I'm not going into them now. But there's no way, I mean, I mean, yes, talk about it and think about it, but, at, at my level as a city councilor, I can't even begin to tell you what to, um, it, it just, I just need more background, and surely you can figure out what data would be helpful. I have great confidence in your ability to do that.
We will, and we'll, we'll give you some thoughts, and then if we, if we miss, miss something that, you know, somebody thinks is important, then we can go back and look at that. Again, we see this as a long iterative process.
Thank you.
Yeah, as, you know, as, what I'm seeing is we're, we're promoting, well, we're not promoting, but we're getting urban sprawl if they can't develop within the first half, the first half mile has special rules. And, you know, the thinking was, we might annex at some time. So people are jumping that half mile and going on out there. I'm seeing quarter-mile water lines run straight up into a subdivision that's lots on both sides. If we put a six-inch line there for fire flow, we're not going to have, we're having water quality issues at the end of the line. Especially until they get built. So you sit there as, as that develops, and you've got that pipe sitting full of water. So, uh, Monty and I've really just started, you know, the whatefs on this thing. And, uh, I think it's the, as the city has to grow with that water system, we're going to have to come up with something. And we don't have a, I don't know that we have a solution right now, it's just that, you know, maybe in here, in the standards we're going to bring you, that fire flow in the, in the, um, half-mile radius outside the city will be considered. And hopefully, we can get some standards and guidelines in the, for that. That's all I had on that. Monty, um, I had a comment. We, um, this, this development standard that you're going to see have gone from 271 pages down to about 81 pages. Forty-six of those are text, 35-ish, 36 are, uh, details, exhibits, pictures, the picture's worth a thousand words. So I think this, I, I've already been told, this thing is a lot more understandable and usable that will be presented, and that's what we needed. The other one was just too confusing. And I think Mayor Joyce has been sort of the pusher behind this, thank you. We'll get down, thank you.
I'm not sure about that, but I, I appreciate you guys getting it cleaned up. Uh, on the rural water thing, Monty, how, how much of these questions are relevant to us because we own the rural water system? Whereas if we did not own those rural water systems, this wouldn't be an issue for us to be talking about?
Oh, I, I think, I, I don't think the fact that we own a rural water district is driving this too much. I mean, rural water districts are exempt. Trying to look ahead and see what is really going to be the city's role in, in water. And, and we're, we're starting to think about this as part of the water treatment plan and call. You know, do we eventually become a, a regional water supplier? And, uh, but, but in that, certainly around our perimeter, what's our responsibility to be making sure we can provide, uh, a backbone for, sent up a fire? And in that half mile adjacent to the city limits, what, what do we expect from that?
I, I think that it's a, I mean, the rural water issue is one that has come up in various contexts over the last several years, just in terms of what we're supposed to do with certain, certain issues that relate to the rural water system. I think we need a comprehensive strategic plan around the, the fringe of the water, uh, system, in terms of how much of this should we bring up to city standards, and how, where should we put fire flows, and, you know, that, that kind of, I mean, these were initially purchased by the city with a view towards annexation, which the state changed laws around and made it harder for us to do that, but we need to reevaluate what we can do. You know, do we want to look at annexation in some of these areas and build these, 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 uh, systems up? But that, I mean, that's a, I think, a large-scale strategic plan around growth, and where's it going to go? And, you know, we, we really need to address that at a, a macro level. Instead of what I think you guys are concerned about, which is just this sort of one-off, somebody wants to build something over here, what do we do about it? Somebody wants to do something here, we need to, we need a, a long-term, large-scale strategic plan around.
You know, I'd agree with that. I really haven't thought in terms of strategic planning, but, but certainly that, that we've needed to look at something. I mean, originally, the rural water system is a great idea, we're going to get water to the rural areas, and they were 10-acre lots, 20-acre lots. You know, we now have a residential subdivision that's just outside the city limits that our residential lots being served by a rural water district. I don't think that was ever the intent of the rural water system. So that will necessitate in the future, and that one is fortunately can provide fire flows, because of the way that it's set up and it does. But, you know, future ones may not. So I've made that note, and I think we can incorporate that into our thinking. Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
That's all that I have.
Thank you guys for your work, the committee that you all have been working with. We appreciate that, and, and, you know, I think all of us on the council are certainly optimistic and eager to try to find ways to make development in the city more feasible, and more efficient, and, and easier on everybody, and, and this effort will go a long way to doing that.
Thank you.
We're seriously like six items into this agenda. Item 6F, authorized Stillwater Regional Airport to submit Federal Aviation Administration application for federal assistance. Mr. Prigle.
Hello again, Paul Prigle, Airport Director. And tonight, I come to you with the opportunity to receive a grant at the airport. Uh, this is through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act, or CRRSA. In that act recently, there was an allocation of $2 billion to support US airports. And on the 12th of February, it was announced that Stillwater Regional Airport was eligible to receive $1,116,429 of that relief funding. Tonight, what I come to you to request is for us to be able to submit application for that funding, which would go towards our operational expenses. We'll have up to four years to draw from that grant. And, um, once we make application, there, uh, under standard federal, uh, grant procedures, there'll be, uh, an acceptance that will have to be signed off by the mayor, and, um, then we can start, um, drawing down on that grant. So tonight, I would request, uh, permission to submit application, and also request that the council authorize the mayor to sign any additional documents that are needed. Once we receive the grant, uh, we will then return to council with a budget amendment that would reflect the appropriations of that.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize airport staff to submit the application for federal assistance, and authorize the mayor to sign all required documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that motion is approved. Thank you, Paul. Good luck. I guess we get it no matter what, right? Good job. Thanks for bringing us more money. Item 6G, approve the following budget amendments to return remaining fund balances. Christie, clock.
Yes, good evening, Christie, Finance Director. And on the agenda this evening is a number of budget amendments to close out several capital projects that have now been completed. So those completed projects include the replacement of a microphone system at the community center, improvements to Grand Butte Street, the CDBG-funded portion of the Strickland Park Playground, mill and overlay for Ramsey Street, and then improvements to the intersection at Western and Hall of Fame. And then on, later this evening, under the SUA trustee agenda, there will be two additional budget amendments. One of those is the chlorine feed replacement equipment at the water treatment plant, and then the purchase of a compactor for the convenience collection center. So it is staff recommendation that the council approve the amendments as presented.
Thank you, Christie. Counselors, questions or a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendments to return the remaining balances to the aforementioned funds. Aftermentioned fund accounts.
We have a motion and a second to approve these budget amendments. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those budget amendments are approved. That takes us to Item 7A, Resolution CC-2021-5, a resolution declaring the public necessity for acquiring ownership to real property, permanent right-of-way, and/or permanent and temporary easements on certain tracts of land hereinafter described for the purpose of replacing the Third Avenue Bridge over East Boomer Creek in the city of Stillwater. Mr. Dorman?
Yes, that's mine.
Okay.
The title is pretty much explanatory. Basically, we were trying to park about 1,200 square feet over the approach for that bridge project. Uh, we've been unable-
To get that through negotiation, so we need to be able to move forward with imminent domain.
All right. Counselors, questions? This is for the Third Avenue Bridge? This is the one at Third and Perkins, basically? Yeah, okay. 1,200 feet of right-of-way, huh?
1,200 feet.
Counselors, questions or a motion on this resolution?
Motion to, um, adopt Resolution CC 2021-5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC-2021-5 is approved. Item 8A is ordinances on first read, ordinance 3472, which is an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 14 Civil Emergencies, Article 1 in general to amend Section 14-1 Findings of Fact and Section 14-7 Sunset and declaring an emergency. This is a renewal or extension of the Stillwater mask ordinance, which currently expires at the end of February. This would extend the mask ordinance under the same, uh, conditions currently in place through May 25th, 2021, which would get us through the end of the school years at both OSU and Stillwater Public Schools. I don't know if you guys have comments or questions on this, uh, mo, on the, um, extension of the ordinance. I will just say, I, I think I got four emails today about it, um, which is about 404, less than I got the last time we talked about this. So I, I think people seem to be either decided, or just not as concerned about the mask ordinance as they used to be. A couple of folks in opposition felt that we just haven't been paying attention to them, and I want to assure you, if, if you're opposed to this, it's not because, well, it's not that we haven't heard you. We ha, I have heard you, I've heard folks who have expressed concerns about why we would support a mask ordinance and why we'd extend- and why we'd extend it. I understand that people have concerns about it. I really do. I have spent a whole lot of time, I think like the rest of the counselors here, spent a whole lot of time looking at this, reading about it, researching the issues. And I will tell you that I personally find that the evaluation is that mask ordinances work and that masks work in general. I will also say that mask ordinances are supported by local, state, federal, and global public health authorities. They're supported by our local partners at OSU, Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology Centers, Stillwater Medical Center, and they're supported by the large majority of local citizens. And so I think it's, you know, in my five years on council, it's hard to imagine anything that we've done that's got broader or wider community support than this mask ordinance. And so again, it's not that we haven't heard that there's opposition. I know that there is and I understand that and I appreciate the people that have expressed their opposition to this. But if we were to go against the overwhelming support for an ordinance like this, I think we would be in dereliction of our duty as counselors to represent this community well. So other comments?
I'll just piggyback that by saying this decision tonight, at least on my behalf, also has nothing to do with what Oklahoma State University is doing. This is a decision that I personally have arrived at based on what I feel is best for the city of Stillwater and for the safety and health and well-being of its citizens. I only say that because that was brought up in one of the emails that I received today. And I assure everybody out there that my decision is not based in any part on what Oklahoma State University or any other entity is doing. This is purely in the interest of the public health. So that's about all I have to say.
I think that being said, Counselor Wedlake, it is important, I know it was kind of an exciting day for a lot of the youth in our community. They got to return to the classroom and you know, at the start of all of this, one of the things that really motivated me was our youth and that, you know, for them to be safe and in the classroom, this mask mandate out in the community is so necessary to help control community spread and keep our youth and educators safe in the classroom. I can't think of a more important way for us to support the families in our community right now than to keep this mitigation measure in place through the full year.
Such a good reminder to bring, to be talking about this tonight, to, you know, there is a trend into complacency as immediate numbers go down, whether that's just weather or whatever, but please do not be complacent about this. This is still a critical medical situation and masks have shown to improve all of our situations.
Yeah, that's a good point, Vice Mayor. The hospitals' numbers in terms of inpatient COVID patients have improved dramatically since the holiday period, but their ICU numbers, total ICU patients, including COVID and non-COVID, are still above what their capacity was before this whole thing started, right? So we're not, you know, it's wonderful to see improvement. Hopefully, it's not just because people couldn't get tested because of the weather. I'm sure some of it is, but for the most part, we are seeing a downward trend. But that's not a reason to abandon our efforts. We're still in a situation locally where our hospital is still under a significant amount of strain. Just because they're not completely inundated like they were over the holidays does not mean that everything's smooth sailing locally. So we do need to continue to take these efforts and continue to wear our masks and continue to keep our distance and avoid situations that are high risk for the transmission of Further comments, motions?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3472 to second reading.
Second.
Second.
With a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second reading. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3472 is moved to second reading. That second reading will occur at a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday morning at 8:00 a.m., which will happen in this same setting, online and in person. All right, that takes us to ordinance on second reading, 3471, an ordinance of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, terminating the defined benefit pension system known as the Employee Retirement System Defined Benefit Plan for retirees only of Stillwater, Oklahoma, adopted by ordinance 20 to 11 on October 20, 1985, as amended, directing distribution of excess assets, providing for severability and repealer, and declaring an emergency. Questions or comments, counselors? Is there a motion?
Yes, motion to adopt ordinance 3471.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second, sorry.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Elaine did? Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3471. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3471 is adopted. Is there a motion regarding the emergency clause?
Yes, motion regarding the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause to ordinance 3471. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3471 is declared to be an emergency. All right, I'm going to jump to item 10, appointments. We have two openings, well, one opening each on the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission that need to be filled. We had a couple of applicants for the Board of Adjustment and a few more for the Planning Commission. At this time, I would like to nominate Tim Harden to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment. We have to do these separately, right, John? I can do them together? Okay. So I'd like to nominate Tim Harden to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment and Preston Bobo to be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on those appointments. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those appointments are approved. I will also note that just today, I was notified we will have another opening on the Board of Adjustment, so we just had the two applicant, or you know, I think we had a couple of applications, but if there are other folks out there who would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment and be involved in the city planning process at that level, we'd love to have your applications. You can find that at stillwater.org. All right, we'll go back up to item nine, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol?
Yes, sir. Been an interesting couple of weeks.
Has it?
Say the least. And I would like to talk about our staff for a moment. I simply can't provide enough praise.
Is this mic on? Is your mic on? I'm sorry.
It's on.
There we go.
May not have it close enough. I simply cannot provide enough praise for our staff, all of them, every one of them. They worked under miserable conditions for long hours and some of them was as long as 48 hours, the fire department 16 hours on, eight hours off, for others 12 and 12, and it just went on. And then we kept asking for more and they responded when the answer could have been no. They could have said, we're tapped out, have no more energy, we're staying home. Departments helped each other with equipment and staff, police and fire pulled people out of harmful weather and out of bad health situations. We experienced cascading events that erupted with the first event, causing several more down the line. We've experienced the same major issues in other cities and were able to adapt, innovate, and for the most part, continue services without interruptions. And the two interruptions of power were not due to our equipment or staff. Overcoming all those issues is due to our dedicated staff who pulled together as a team. And again, I just can't say enough about them.
Yeah, I would just absolutely echo that. You know, given the situation that we see in other communities and given the circumstances that we're facing here over the last couple of weeks of extreme cold, you know, the water department folks who are out there fixing water lines in sub-freezing weather, the electric folks keeping the lights on, you know, everybody that, like you said, I mean, stepped up to provide service above and beyond. I think we as a community should be very, very proud of the folks who work here at the city of Stillwater and should be very appreciative of the efforts that you all have put in to deal with. Not only, I mean, just this last two weeks would have been an unprecedented event for the last year, right? I mean, for, you know, it'd be once a year if we dealt with something like this, it would be insane. And this, by the way, is coming on the heels of a year of COVID, a fall ice storm that created as much havoc as we've ever seen in the city around an ice storm, and who knows however many other events that we've had to handle. So thank you to each of you, to you, City Manager McNichol, to your staff, to our water department, power, fire, police, public works, waste management, the library for doing what they're doing, this community center. I mean, it's just down the line, I think everybody here at the city has contributed to making sure that our community has been as safe and as healthy as possible. And again, if it was just these two weeks, you guys would deserve a medal and it's these two weeks on behalf, on the end, at the end of a crazy year. So thank you on behalf of everyone in Stillwater. All right, counselors, announcements? Nothing tonight? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for February 22, 2021. Consent docket has minutes. Trustees, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item 5A is a quarterly economic development report from the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Justin Mingus.
Evening, everyone. I had it on mute, but I like cheered when I got to go in front of utility authority, but I apologize, I think Lauren's missed on here, so Lauren, keep my lights on, please. I'm sorry you have to wait for a minute. I wanted to start and Norman kind of shared a story about the city crews and everybody working their tail off us. I just wanted to share one story from a person who represents businesses and a business owner in our community about how I think we've instilled amazing customer service and allowed our local crews to critically think through a situation and solve it. Third and Knoblock, Fourth and Knoblock was one of the pipe that broke, I don't know, pick a day in the last couple of weeks, it was somewhere in there. And I was at the ice cream shop making ice cream and when you shut off our water, it's tough to make ice cream when you don't have water running. And the young man came to the shop and said, hey, 10 minutes, it could be shut off and it could be a couple hours. I ran down there and said, hey, just give me 15 minutes, I'll finish this batch. You won't hear another complaint from me and we'll close for a couple hours, you're good to go. And you could tell the wheels were spinning, ah, do I have the authority to do this? What would this mean to him? And he immediately said, yep, you're good, you've got 10 minutes, you go do it and get it done. And so we ran back to the shop and got the ice cream made. I ran back down, gave them all $5 gift cards to come back to the store. But I just wanted to applaud Norman, you and your team for allowing them to critically think and do that. As a business owner, that would have been, you know, 80 bucks, I'd have had to just kind of pour down a drain. In the grand scheme of things, $80 isn't a lot, but it meant a lot more to me that he went that extra mile. So thank you. To my report as the economic development person, not as the ice cream shop person, you see the numbers, I won't go into great detail, one, because it's almost 8 o'clock and two, we've done this report several times, you guys kind of understand some of the metrics to report on, but RFP activity was light in the fourth quarter. I should start to say, this is all data from October to December of 2021, so fourth quarter for us in the calendar year, fiscal quarter two for the city. RFP activity, we had 19 RFPs that we received in the quarter, we responded to six of those. I prepared this report, you know, a couple of weeks ago, thinking that we were going to be on that one, but the weather canceled it. So as of the 2nd of February, we had 20 active projects. We have about that plus or minus one or two right now. We had a couple drop off, we had one more come back through today. We performed a couple BREs and then we had one site visit in that quarter. We did have a new locate, if you will, in that quarter for the pandemic research and state health lab, you know, opened up and cut their ribbon over the last 30 to 60 days. I know that there is debate at 2030 Lincoln about, you know, the process that that went through to come here. As the local economic developer, I'm excited that it's here. The fact that we'll have 35 to 65 lab professionals working in here, the research grants that will be coming to our community because of the pandemic research, the partnership between animal science and human sciences and all of that, I get really giddy to think it's our little version of, you know, the research triangle in North Carolina, right? That's what I'm hoping for, right? This is the start of us bringing other companies to our community to have those types of jobs. So I wanted to make sure that was in the report and that it's definitely a positive for our community. I'm excited that OSU has tried to be very creative and how they collaborated with that and I wish them the best. As far as, you know, networking events, we continue to attend, unfortunately, they're all via Zoom these days, but we participated in a couple, you know, happy hours and networking events via Zoom with collaboration with our Oklahoma City Chamber of Partners. There were a couple site selectors, at least on the site selector guild one, that we're actually working projects in our area that are one of our active projects, so it was nice to see them face to face, because some of those have gone on hold. On the retention and expansion, seems like it was so long ago, but it wasn't too far ago that we partnered with you all to do the business relief grants in October, where you all allocated $500,000 for us to give $500,000 for businesses to show a 25% loss based on certain benchmarks. That's the first time that we've ever put on a grant, facilitated a grant with the city, so there were a few times we stepped our toe on that, but we learned from it. The cool part is, our team, within about 30 days, us working with Melissa Reams and her crew, we had 128 applications that we received. 14 of those were denied for various reasons, some of them not in city limit, some of them weren't in business to meet those benchmarks, meaning they weren't in business before the pandemic, and others just didn't have a 25% loss. So it was a fun but bad conversation to say, hey, you didn't have a 25% loss, congratulations, but you don't, you know, qualify for the grant. So also, I guess, congratulations. We approved 106 of those, 128, and then we received a few that trickled in after the fact. So I wanted you to know this number just because there was conversation around whether we would need to do kind of another tranche, these grants, or we only had about eight that came in after the deadline, and so there wasn't an overwhelming backlog or pipeline. That's why we didn't come back and ask for additional funds. And it was amazing to see the applicants across many industries and businesses, right? CPA, attorneys, restaurants, retail, construction, and so I think we did a really good job on how we wrote the qualifications to allow for all those folks that were impacted and not maybe, you know, just focus on restaurant retail because this pandemic definitely impacted all. We did sell a lot in our Commerce Place industrial park. We sold a one acre lot in the fourth quarter of last year to Shake Enterprises, so this is Shoaib, Jake. I think actually Mayor Joyce will remember, you know, Shoaib and them from when he was at the university in the entrepreneurship, but Shoaib and his group of amazing entrepreneurs have a couple of companies in town hiring individuals, so we were excited to sell him one acres. Hopefully, they will move some of their businesses from the east side outside of city limits into city limits and be one of our premier facilities there in the park. be one of our premier facilities there in the park. And then, in here, it shows that we applied for a workforce grant. Unfortunately, I didn't have, like, Paul Kriegel and the library crew write my grant, because I didn't win my grant like they have. We did apply for a workforce grant through the state, and it was us partnering with Meridian and our friends in Cushing and Central to start to put some resources around our Paint County workforce initiative around the ACT work keys and some other things. I thought it was a really good grant application, but we just didn't get it. And we'll continue to seek funds for that initiative going forward. We wrapped up our entrepreneurship franchise forum we did last quarter, but we brought in a lot of franchises from across the country that would fit our market, that were looking for franchisees. They told their story all via Zoom, obviously. It's on our Facebook, or Startup Stillwater's Facebook Live. So, it was fun to hear from other concepts that are looking to expand, but more importantly, that are concepts that would do well in our community, because unfortunately, we have a few turnkey facilities that are just begging for a fast casual concept to come in. And so, we're trying to get the word out, local entrepreneurs, that, you know, there's a business basically on a shelf that you can go buy, and you pay for that menu and that marketing and all of the things you don't have to spend a year worrying about, and then you get all of their backend support to get it. So, if there's anybody watching still at 8 o'clock tonight, or tomorrow, or the next day, if you are interested in becoming an entrepreneur and you are in the restaurant world, call us and we'd love to connect you with a restaurant concept that's looking to open up our community. And I'll stop there as far as the, you know, hand update. Before I stop talking, I just realized as this meeting was going on, this will be my last meeting to present with Vice Mayor Darlington as a counselor, because I don't present again, I think, until May. And so, Vice Mayor, or Pat, I want to call you Pat. It was a pleasure presenting to you first four or five years ago when I came on. Some of your questions were very tough and uncomfortable, and I have learned to appreciate your style, and you have made us stronger for it. Thank you for your service, but I know we've got two candidates that are going to hopefully fill this spot, and I continue to honor you in asking tough questions.
Oh, thank you, Jason. Justin, I will definitely come back and ask tough questions if I, if they come up. Don't, don't be worried.
No, 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 you don't come back, and we're done. That was my nice thing.
Thank you for your work for Stillwater.
What I heard was this is your last opportunity to grill Justin in front of the public. Now's your opportunity.
Oh, no, I'll get on the agenda. I'll get on the, not for public hearing.
I'll be able to make you an ex-official board member of City of our meetings.
Oh, okay.
But that's all the update I have for you all. But as always, I'm very happy to answer questions or have a debate.
Thank you, Justin. Trustees, questions or comments?
I feel bad I don't have a hard question, Justin.
You're okay.
Justin, have you seen other opportunities for grants from an economic development perspective come through? Are you seeing, my sense in the work that I do is that there's a lot more out there that we should be really focused and prepared to respond to some of those things and really actively looking for them.
Yeah, so there have been a few that have come out because of, you know, the CARES Act and other various legislation. Actually, I had a meeting with, Melissa Reams and I had a meeting with the Grants Drive crew about a week or two ago. It was a community development block grant. Unfortunately, a lot of the block grants, some of the other economic development grants, they don't allow for any sort of speculation, right? So, it's, hey, do you have an active project right now, or you're looking to expand, and can we quantify their payroll or just some sort of an ROI? And don't have those identified projects right now. We talked with Justin Hazner at the Incubator and, you know, some BRE visits talk about, hey, if you thought about expanding, what would that look like? You know, how do we understand what your needs could be so to find an opportunity to plug in? I get that it's public money, we don't want speculation, but I wish there was a little bit of an opportunity to, I don't know, use some of those funds to either rehab a facility that we know if it was rehab, we would have an opportunity, but I can't say what's this company that's going to move into that. On our RFPs that we're getting right now, there's a, a lot of people just want existing space. We rarely get a greenfield. We got one today. It was the first one in a while that we had, where they only wanted green. And so, we don't have those existing properties. You know, we've got one manufacturing facility, $300,000 per feet, and they're working on it to improve it, but we don't have any other space that's over $100,000. So, we immediately get knocked out there. On the office space side, we actually just lost a project after a site visit and multiple conversations with us last week, because they found, in a town in Texas, it was a turnkey facility for an back office call center. The incentives were amazing. We had every workforce. It was all there. It was truly, I think we bogged ourselves down for 60 days too long figuring out what a rehab schedule could look like for this space. And they said, no, 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 risk management, we've got a turnkey over here, we're just in. And so, I wish some of these grants would allow us to kind of put the $100,000 into the building, or more importantly, one thing that we're talking about internally is, how do we start to put some of these spaces on under option contracts, either via purchase or lease, and kind of cut out 60 or 90 days worth of time that these develop, or these clients, you know, are looking at? I mean, we have a general idea of what a 50-person call center would look like and what those lease terms would need to be with the build out. How do we just cut through that and pay X dollars for some sort of a lease option or purchase option? Because, like I said, we just lost one, and that was exactly why we lost it. You know, it was so frustrating.
Yeah. I think that concept of, you know, for capital and infrastructure projects, it's that concept of shovel-ready, that's a little harder. I hear what you're saying. It's a little more challenging from an economic development perspective, but I love that you're having some of those conversations. But I think the idea is kind of the same, right? Having kind of that shovel-ready, like, how do you, how do you respond quickly? Because I think those dollars kind of come quickly, and you do kind of have to have that project in place. So, getting the word out and having kind of deeper conversations about what could be shovel-ready from an economic development sense, and maybe just getting out into our community. You know, there is, there are these potential things that will come down the pipe. I think, you know, with the new administration, with, you know, additional funding coming through these different federal programs, I think we will see projects come through and money available for them. It's just getting folks kind of at the ready to respond when that money comes through, because if we don't get it, somebody else will.
Yeah. It's fun to interact with, you know, Melissa Reams, make sure that I don't get you all in trouble. If I ask some questions, well, help me understand, you know, how long do I have for these jobs to be created? You know, how buttoned up does, if I pointed that company over there, does that suffice? Or, you know, so it's, I'm trying to flex as much as we can, because I do think we could have, you know, applied for a couple, but it would have been, I don't know, gray at best. And I don't, I don't think we all want to necessarily, I live in the gray a lot, but I don't want to get you all.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah.
Anything else, trustees?
Thank you, too. Justin.
Thanks, Justin. I know you guys are paddling a little bit upstream at this point, as are many economic developers, trying to fight for not as much activity. The one that that got away this week was pretty frustrating, because that was a, that was an excellent job by you and your team to get them almost on, here in Stillwater in the first place. So, keep up the good work. You know, it's certainly not a lack of effort by you all and not a lack of, well, you know, we need those resources here to be able to respond a little better to some of these things. So, we'll do what we can to help on that side of it.
Yeah. It took all I had to not, in the snarky email about why they chose a town in Texas during last week.
Yeah. Last week was a really interesting time to choose to move 50 people to an office in Texas.
Yeah. I will say this, too. We, the, and I know I said I was going to stop talking and applaud it. We did share one of the positive stories also through a site selector last week. We, some of our projects that I think we're pretty close on are ones that are high infrastructure needs, right? Water and electricity. Being able to show the press release when OSU stepped in, when our call pumps were frozen, and how OSU stepped in, and we got through the crisis, you know, that was an exact concern that was brought up in a site visit, was, you know, what happens if? And so, it was really nice to say we weren't lying, like, there is some collaboration here. We do have additional resources. And so, we did pass that press release on to the site selector that's working. So, I know Jenica put out a ton of press releases last week, so I want her to know that they were important to us, and we did share them with the right people.
That's great. That's good to hear. All right. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, Lauren, you're up.
That does take us to reports from officers of boards. Mr. Norman? Mr. McNichol?
No reports.
Trustees? Is there a motion to adjourn? Seda?
Motion to adjourn. Seda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February 22, 2021. On the consent docket, we don't have a consent docket. Nothing on the consent docket?
Looks like we have.
Maybe I've just missed a page. We have something on the consent docket.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's minutes.
Wait, are the budget amendments on the consent docket, too?
Yes.
So, you've got approval of the special minutes?
From February 1st, and then you should have a consent, I didn't, to approve the budget amendments. You're right, the budget amendments for the projects.
They're both under two. That's two A and B.
Yeah.
So, that's fine. I was just not thinking that. I was looking at it wrong. So, on the consent docket, we have our minutes from our meeting of February 1st, and we also have the budget amendments that we discussed earlier in the City Council meeting. So, is there a motion on the consent docket? Trustees?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that consent docket is approved. Takes us to item 5A, revenue and budget amendments to facilitate natural gas payments. Exciting.
What a way to end up a very interesting meeting here. Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer for the City of Stillwater, and I'm before you this evening to present a request for a budget amendment. During these last two weeks, we have had historic cold temperatures coupled with record winter precipitation, and that has caused our Stillwater Energy Center to run 24/7 since February the 10th. If you will recall, the Zella engines are natural gas-fired, and so, as we have seen, supply for natural gas drop off and the demand increase, the price also increased with that demand. And cost has jumped from $3.50 a decotherm to over $500 a decotherm. And I had to look up what a decotherm was. It is roughly the equivalent of 1,000 cubic feet of natural gas. I still don't know what it is, but that's what it said on the internet. So, our usage and the associated costs have exceeded the current budget allotment. And I believe the current budget allotment for natural gas was $1.3 million. So, our solution, and there is a silver lining to this, because we're generating electricity. So, we're able to sell that electricity back into the grid, back to GRDA, who is going to pay us for that produced energy. So, what we're proposing is that we increase the revenue that we're going to receive from GRDA, and we increase the associated cost to produce the revenue, the electricity in the natural gas, both of those by $20 million each. So, there, we're still in balance, you can see. Revenue equals expenditure. So, this evening, that is our recommendation to you, that you approve this budget amendment, so we can pay the bill when it comes.
I just, I can't even begin to fathom that we need a $20 million revenue or budget increase.
I think this is the biggest budget amendment I've ever been asked to approve.
It is, and it takes your breath away. It does. But it is kind of the outgrowth of last week's activities.
I didn't, I didn't have a chance to watch the governor's press conference today about energy prices, that he, I mean, supposedly, the Corporation Commission, somebody's going to step in and help make sure this doesn't all hit everybody at once.
I wasn't able to watch that, Mayor.
You were, or you weren't?
I was.
What did he say?
He did say that, I mean, I, I think, you know, and I'm sure there's probably more expert folks maybe even just with us tonight, but he, multiple entities within the state infrastructure government will, government infrastructure will kind of be looking at it. So, obviously, from a regulatory perspective, I think Corporation Commission will be a part of that. The Attorney General will be a part of that. Sounds like both the House and the Senate will be doing what they can from a legislative perspective. I think they mentioned that if you are, I don't know how this may be Lauren can speak from a, from a city utility perspective, but they advise, the Attorney General advised, for the companies that do bill customers to abandon direct withdrawal or direct deposit for utility bills. And maybe, I guess, us as consumers, individuals should also, you know, make sure that that's not happening. The expectation is that this first, you know, the next bill that we get will be an increase only because of the amount of energy that we use, right? We were, we were heating our houses more, we were, you know, using more energy. So, we will see that increase in this next bill, most likely, but that we wouldn't see the increase due to the fluctuation of energy prices in our bills, maybe not for another, I don't know, 60 to 90 days. And hopefully, a lot of things would happen within, within all those conversations with the Corporation Commission, Attorney General, the executive branch with the governor, and those energy companies to see kind of what that ultimately was going to look like.
Okay. What do we expect Norman or Lauren to see from a city utility perspective?
We've had those conversations with GRDA, and just as the governor said, it's going to be a while before we figure that out. It will probably be about the second week or third week of March, before we know what the power cost, the power adjustment's going to be, and we can start having discussions at that time. And a lot of that will depend on what action the Corporation Commission and others take. So, one of the things I was going to say at the end of the meeting is a lot of people are calling to, wanting to know exactly what their utility bills are going to look like, and we don't know.
Yeah.
There's a whole lot of information that's up in the air and probably will be until about mid-March.
Yeah. We, I think it's important for people to understand that we don't set those rates, like, completely on our own. We don't, we don't get to determine what to charge necessarily. We're buying that power from GRDA, and clearly, it costs, instead of $1 million this year for us to generate electricity, it's going to cost $21 million this year to do that. And so, everybody's costs have gone up. Somebody, you know, we're going to have to figure out how that gets passed along. And so, we'll, we'll be working on it certainly, and looking at how to make sure it, we can mitigate it for people as much as possible. But it will be mid-March, you said before, we really know too much more about what rates will look like.
Yes, and to address one of the Counselor Jaloski's issues, we've already looked at our billing system regarding the auto pay, and we're working on it. I don't think that's going to be an issue for maybe one or two more cycles, but we are looking at that.
Trustees, any other questions about this issue?
Mayor?
I thought Lauren would look. I thought Lauren would look older tonight, but he looks really good.
More gray hair.
Gray hair is good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much.
It's been a very challenging last week and a half, I can tell you that. So lots of late night meetings and early morning meetings and scrambling around and great decisions, but I want to thank Norman, Melissa, Kristi Clark. I mean, we, you can't beat staff. We just have to get together, adapt, and overcome, and we've got a path forward, so that's.
You've got to be excited about how many people learned about the power grid and the Southwest Power Pool and how this all, all this stuff. Well, you've been telling us about it for years, and we're all kind of like glaze over whenever the grid comes up, and now everybody wants to know how it works.
I loved it. I turned on the news and there was SPP, and I said, wow, they're telling everybody, you know, they're giving a class on it right here. It was wonderful. So I don't think they would like that much spotlight, but they were certainly in the spotlight, and I think they explained a lot very well to folks because everybody's got questions. I mean, how's this work? Where are we at? So I thought they did a good job of education, so.
Well, I want to express our appreciation to you, you guys directly just around the communication standpoint, because there were a lot of utility customers in the state and around the area that, you know, who their power companies weren't even trying to let them know what was going on or when, when their power might go out. And I know for you all with a few minutes' notice, trying to figure out who has to be turned off and when, and getting that information over to Norman and to the marketing team so we could get that information out, that's a lot of extra work on top of just trying to do your actual job, which is to keep the lights on when you can. It was appreciated by folks who, you know, even if we couldn't tell them until a couple minutes after their lights went off that their lights were going to be off, it was still a much better job and a bigger effort than, than maybe some of the other folks around the state got to experience. So thank you guys for doing that extra work.
I think it's important to realize for people that are listening out there too, because I've had a couple of people comment, why couldn't the city get information out sooner? And what I think people need to realize is that when it comes to the power grid, and this is something I didn't even think about until a couple of years ago, but everything happens in real time. There are no capacitors that store charges, and you can release electricity at a whim. Everything is in real time. And it's important to note too that on some of these rolling blackout alerts, the city literally had, you know, a five-minute lead time before information had to go out. So, so again, bear in mind that all of that stuff happens, you know, all in real time. So thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Very good point.
All right, so trustees, is there a motion on the budget amendments? That we've been discussing?
Go ahead. Motion to approve the revenue and budget amendments to facilitate natural gas payments.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and seconds to approve these budget amendments. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington.
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yep.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those budget amendments are approved. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman, Mr. McNichol?
No reports.
Can, can I ask you something real quick, Mr. McNichol? Do you, you have any updates on limb collection? Do you know how far along we are or when we might be totally done with that? I'm just bringing this on you at the last second. The limbs, like ice storm. I know that kind of dropped down the list this week.
It dropped off the list this week, frankly. We got caught up Saturday with all of the waste management, except we did not do recycling starting Monday of last week. We will be back on a regular schedule this week, and I assume that, assuming the equipment is put back in shape for picking up those limbs because all of it was converted into snow removal.
Yeah.
I assume that they will also start picking up the debris this week. I know they were 90% finished with the city when all the weather started happening, and frankly, I don't remember how long ago that was, but.
Sure. Okay, well, if we could have an update in the next couple of days that kind of shows people if, you know, where we haven't picked up. I know we've mentioned before that there were some areas where people put more out after their first round had been picked up, and so now it's kind of hard to tell what's, where people have gone and what's been through, but we'd love to have an update just so we can let people know where.
Yeah, there are very few piles around now that people that still have them probably are quite upset that they do, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. We'll get some information out. Appreciate it. Trustees, any other announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That's a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington.
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti. Trustee Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. Thank you very much. That concludes our meetings for tonight.